Oh, is this mine?
This is yours. Could I have a board members for their seats? Those in the auditorium, please be seated. As the current chairman of the Fairfax County School Board and with the quorum of the board members present, I call this first regular meeting of the fiscal year 2014 to order. Please stand and join me in the pleasurable audience and remain standing for the moment of silence and the national anthem performed by Michael Lamar, a Robinson Secondary graduate and winner of two 2013 KPI Awards for Best Male Vocalist and Best Song. Michael will be attending Emerson College in Boston this fall. I present the
President of the United States of America, and to the Republic, we would like to stand on a nation, on God, indivisible, with the Lord, with justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
That was wonderful, Michael. Thank you again. We have a certification of closed meeting compliance. In order to comply with the section 2.2, 3712D of the Court of Virginia, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on June, July 11, 2013, to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. The foregoing shall also be deemed to include the certification of each school board member who served on a student disciplinary committee that those closed committee meetings were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by section 2.2, 371182 of the Court of Virginia, and that only student disciplinary matters were heard, discussed, or considered in those closed committee meetings. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Hines and seconded by Mr. Stork. All those in favor, raise your hand. Smith, Velkoff, Evans, Strauss, Moon, Heinz, Stork, McLaughlin, McElvin, and Reed, Darren Kofax. Opposing and abstaining is Shorish. Thank you. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Karen Garza, to the board table. There was a 35 seconds. Welcome, Dr. Garza. We look forward to working with you. And I would like to also welcome our 2013 and 2014 student representative, Will Ash. Will is a rising senior at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, and we will have a chance to hear from him a little later in the meeting. Welcome, Will. There are several former school board members in attendance tonight, and I would like to recognize them. Mr. Gibson, I saw him. He's from Hunter Mill District, and I have Mr. Brass Center from Lee District as well. I have from Providence District, Mr. Nizalski Eichner. Is Mrs. Okay? Is there any other former board member I'm missing? My eyesight is not that good. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and relating meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. If you have signed up to speak before the board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off or silence your cell phone. Before I go to the annual school board organizational arrangements, let me call on Mrs. Evans for one motion. There should be M3 on the yellow sheet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moon. I move to appoint Douglas A. Tyson as the Cluster Three Assistant Superintendent for the Annandale Stewart-Woodson Pyramid, effective August 1, 2013, and authorize the chairman to execute a contract reflecting this action.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those, you want to say something to say?
Just that I'm very pleased to be making this motion. Of course, we are very sad to be seeing our current Cluster Three Assistant Superintendent leaving us. Mr. Parrish has been wonderful, and we'll honor him at a future date, but I want to say how delighted I am to be welcoming Mr. Tyson into this important cluster. So, thank you very much.
Okay. With that, all those in favor, raise your hand. I see the vote is unanimous. Mr. Tyson, congratulations. Mr. Tyson, would you like to come forward to the podium? I have known Mr. Tyson from about, what, 2006, 2005 timeframe.
That's correct.
You are a man of infinite wisdom, but I'll just give you about a minute.
Well, the applause was certainly less than 35 seconds, which is appropriate, and wanted to be glad that it was. Ms. Evans and Chairman Moon, I want to, and all the members, the quorum of this distinguished body, and certainly to the superintendent Garza, I want to say thank you for your confidence and your outpouring of a vote here this evening. It is not a small task, and it is one that I look forward to with a tremendous amount of alacrity as well as enthusiasm. It would behoove me to make sure this evening, as I was sitting there reflecting in my seat for a few minutes, that I want to also honor and thank John English. I want to honor and thank Sessi Krill, and I want to honor and thank Dan Parrish, who you've already previously mentioned this evening. Three giants who have moved many mountains in Cluster Three, and I'm grateful for that so that they have removed those mountains so that I can see the hills that still need to be surmounted to help all of our children achieve the level of success and to have a level playing field and a safe haven and to provide excellent, excellent opportunities for all of our children here in Fairfax County Public Schools. And I have now stayed under my minute and a half, and I'll take my seat. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tyson. That was very, very well done. We look forward to working with you. Now, it is my great pleasure to turn the gavel over to new superintendent, Dr. Garza, for the election of new chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Moon, members of the board. It gives me great honor tonight to conduct the election of the chairman of the board moving forward. So, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for chairman of the school board. Mr. Velkoff.
I nominate Illyon Moon for chairman of the school board.
Thank you. Mr. Velkoff has nominated Mr. Moon as chairman of the board. Is there a second? Ms. Evans?
I second.
Ms. Evans seconds the motion. Illyon Moon has been nominated for chairman. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing no other nominations, I would open the floor now for any comments, discussion regarding the current nomination on the floor. And I would begin with those two individuals who first made the initial motion and the second. So, Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. It is my distinct honor and privilege to nominate Illyon Moon to serve as our chairman during the next year. His reelection will be in the best interest of our school system because of his leadership qualities, experience, and stabilizing influence. Two years ago, I did not know Mr. Moon, and indeed wondered if I ever would. I also never thought I would eat squid. But since then, I've learned much from him and much about him, some of it surprising. He has a beautiful tenor voice, a passion for performing, and tells a good joke. He's also a tough negotiator, a skilled questioner, and a person who keeps his head even when everyone else around him is losing theirs. I have found him to be a source of sound advice and have benefited on more than one occasion from his counsel. As chairman over the past year, Mr. Moon has shown good judgment, when to intervene, when to hold back, when to stand his ground, and when to yield. He has successfully balanced the chairman's dual duties of ensuring that all opinions are expressed and that decisions are reached. As evidence, I have many times admired his ability to listen to all of us, categorize, and distill the points of view, and then form a decision tree by which a series of votes leads to outcomes with the greatest possible support. As we choose our chairman and vice chairman, it is instructive for us to review our accomplishments of the past year, our work in progress, as well as the challenges and opportunities ahead. Last year, we selected our new superintendent, Dr. Garza, selected the search firm that guided us to her, passed the budget that garnered two-thirds majority, updated the SRNR, and changed boundaries to relieve overcrowding at Fairfax High School. Initiatives that began last year and remain underway include an effort to achieve later high school start times, a Virginia DOE-sponsored efficiency review, a review of the TJ admissions process, and a review of academic, advanced academic programs, as well as a joint review of countywide capital needs in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors. We intend to chart a new course for the years ahead, and the range of potential tasks includes reevaluation of curriculum, pedagogy, assessment, and teacher workload, review of our organizational structure, and a number of concerns under the umbrella of accountability and transparency, auditing, program evaluation, budgeting, and responsiveness to constituents. And as all of this is happening, we are experiencing a number of transitions in the leadership team. Against this backdrop, it strikes me as only prudent to reelect Illyon Moon as chairman. Not only will we benefit from his 14 years' experience, but all the people who must lead the key work of the next year, Dr. Garza, the leadership team, even Dr. Jometro, will benefit from Mr. Moon's continuation as the spokesman and representative of our board. I urge you all to join me in supporting the reelection of Illyon Moon.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Garza, and thank you, Mr. Velkoff. I have not yet eaten squid, but I suppose anything is possible. I am, however, very honored to second this nomination for Mr. Moon to be reelected as school board chair. He has done a fine job of keeping us organized. He has kept in touch with members in a very, very responsive way, and he has basically steered this ship that is the school board with great finesse. So, I know we can count on Mr. Moon to continue keeping us organized, being evenhanded with us, and giving us the benefit of his extensive experience on this board. Mr. Moon did ask me to keep this short, so I will do so, and please note, I didn't even mention herding cats, so I'm proud to second this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Any other comments that any other school board member wished to make regarding the candidacy? Yes. Ms. Schultz?
I think that the product of our previous year and leadership is sitting in your current chair, and we had a superior effort of this board and the collective work of these board members, best shown through the work with Ms. Scottard and HYA and Chairman Moon in the selection of the superintendent and going forward, and I'm very proud of that work. I will say, I am, I find myself disappointed that I did not receive a phone call from the chairman to discuss his candidacy, and I'm the only one. And I find myself in a unique position that I didn't get the opportunity to have a heartfelt conversation, because I do think this is not just about the good things that have been done over the past year, but also opportunities for improvement. We just went through leadership contracts and did performance evaluations for a number of the leadership team and addressed the professionalism that goes along with providing feedback in an annual evaluation of employees. And I don't think that's anything different for self-evaluation for board members or for election for our success of leadership. You know, I've got a quote, and I do love them. Plutarch said, "To make no mistakes is not in the power of man, but from their errors and mistakes, the wise and good learn wisdom for the future." So, I hope that we learn going forward as a board that we are in a new era and that the collaborative nature of this board has to be truly collaborative in all sense, from leadership to one-on-one with each other, and I hope this dawns a new day.
Okay. Yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
I appreciate the many wonderful points that Mr. Velkoff raised, and I also appreciate hearing from Ms. Schultz the concerns that she shared. I just wanted to convey to my colleagues that I had what I thought was a very beneficial conversation with our chairman and very much appreciated his listening to my hopes for this coming year. And I will say that the best work that this board has done in the last year and a half was coming together and with 100% consensus selecting Dr. Garza, and I hope that we as a board will take that wonderful ability that we demonstrated and in this new year through the leadership of our soon-to-be-new chairperson and vice-chairperson, that we really look at ways to improve our consensus building. In the year and a half I've been on the board, there is a lot of seven-to-five votes that have happened, and I think that the public really appreciates and our leadership team appreciates and our school community appreciates when they see this board of 12 really get closer to that consensus, and so I wanted everyone to know that that's an important goal of mine. And also to our leadership team and our new superintendent, I'm also eager to see us as a board through our chairman's leadership to establish more reasonable agendas, because they're rather ambitious and sometimes then we don't stay on time as we should, but I don't want to shortchange the important work that this school system does and that we give really due process to the wonderful work that you all do that we have to then deliberate as trustees of this school system. So, I think we've got some really wonderful work ahead of us in this coming year, and I will be supporting Chairman Moon's candidacy.
Any other comments that was to be made at this time? Hearing none, the motion before the board is that Mr. Illyon Moon be elected chairman of the Fairfax County School Board. If there are no further discussions at this time, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to elect Mr. Moon as chairman of the Fairfax County School Board signify by raising your hand and saying aye. It's Ms. Smith, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. Evans, Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon, Ms. Heinz, Mr. Stork, Ms. McElvin, excuse me, McLaughlin, excuse me, Mr. McElvin, Ms. Reed, Ms. Darin Kofax. Yeah, I knew I was going to mess that up. All opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Schultz. Congratulations, Chairman Moon.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Before we go into the election of vice chairman, let me just say that I'm gratified and humbled by the support and confidence shown by my colleagues. It's a huge improvement from last year, from seven votes to 11. I can take that. I'm in no way a perfect person, but there are many areas I could certainly improve on, and I can only try, and that's the promise I make. With that, let me go to the election of the vice chairman. At this time, I will open the floor to nominations for vice chairman of the school board. Mr. McElvin.
Mr. Chairman, I move to nominate Ms. Tamara Darinak Kofax.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Heinz. Ms. Tamara Darinak Kofax has been nominated for vice chairman. Is there any other nomination? Hearing the other nomination, the motion before the board is to elect Tamara Darinak Kofax as vice chairman of the Fairfax County School Board. I call on those members who nominated Ms. Darinak Kofax first for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I am honored to nominate my friend and colleague, Ms. Tamara Darinak Kofax, for vice chair of the greatest school board in America, of the greatest school system in America. Ms. Darinak Kofax has served in various leadership positions that have positioned and prepared her well to bring a unique perspective to the position of vice chair. This past year, in chairing both the Public Engagement Committee, also known as PEC, and the Streamline and Focus Ad Hoc Committee, also known as the Hocus Pocus Committee, Ms. Darinak Kofax shepherded through many meaningful changes. The crowning achievement of the Streamline and Focus Committee is sitting right in front of us, the time clock, which encourages us to limit our remarks. As vice chair, she will reap what she sowed by having the honor of manually operating that clock and ensuring that all of us make better use of our time together. As a result of her leadership on PEC, the committee has assembled a packet of innovative ideas to enhance our engagement with the community. As vice chair, she will be able to help ensure that those innovative ideas are fully implemented. Ms. Darinak Kofax has always been a strong force in helping us step back and see the broader implications of our decisions. She has joined with me in the past to push the board to convene both an SRNR community committee and an AAP program study before embarking on big policy shifts. As we now embark on developing a new strategic planning layer with Dr. Garza, Ms. Darinak Kofax will bring this long-term vision to our discussions. Perhaps her most qualification, though, is her status as a parent of a current FCPS student. Although some of us are parents of former students, or in my case, future parents of FCPS students, Ms. Darinak Kofax's perspective on many issues is colored through the lens of the current parent, and she has and will continue to help us see issues from this important perspective. Ms. Darinak Kofax, thank you for stepping forward, and I only hope that you can put up with Mr. Moon for a year. Good luck.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. As I reset the clock, which I look forward to teaching you how to do, I just, first, I just want to thank my colleagues for the opportunity to serve as vice chair for the last year. I have really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working with Mr. Moon more closely. I've enjoyed working with leadership team more closely, and of course, all the wonderful folks in the school board office. It's been a great opportunity for me to learn a lot about how the system works. I've had a great education, and so I am very glad to give, to see Ms. Darinak Kofax take this opportunity for the next year. I know Ms. Darinak Kofax as a very careful, creative, and determined person. She is a natural coalition builder, and that is something that we always need to be doing, and so I'm just very excited to support Ms. Darinak Kofax as our next vice chair.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
I just simply wanted to add that I'm very excited about Ms. Darinak Kofax as the candidate serving this role. As many of you might know, there are 12 distinct personalities on this school board, and one of the things that all 12 of us have to work very hard at is being thoughtful and respectful of the differences and how we see the different issues that affect this school system and that we're each tasked with trying to decide. And I have felt very privileged and grateful for my time with Ms. Darinak Kofax on the board to date, because no matter the difference of perspective, I always find that she's incredibly receptive to having that discussion. There is no judgment of any kind of seeing things differently, and it really creates a very safe environment to have those open and honest discussions that hopefully allow us to be better trustees. So, I am incredibly excited to see you for this position and really look forward to working with you for yet another year.
working with you for yet another year.
Any other board member? If not, I'll call for the vote on the nomination of Ms. Daranak Kofax as the vice chairman. The motion before the board is that Tamara Daranak Kofax be elected vice chairman of the Fairfax County School Board. If there is no more discussion, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, vote is unanimous. Congratulations. Ms. Daranak Kofax, you want to say a few words?
Just very briefly. I am really honored at the words you've all spoken. I'm honored to receive your support as I am elected vice chair. I do appreciate very much this opportunity and the confidence you've shown in me, and I will work honestly and deliberately to build our communications and a collaborative nature with this board, and I look forward to doing that over the next year with Chairman Moon and Dr. Garza, and all the leadership team and everyone out there. So thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Well, Ms. Daranak Kofax, you know what you don't know, what you are getting yourself into. But before I go any further, it would be, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, that I have so much appreciated the counsel and advice I get on a regular basis, I have gotten on a regular basis from, you know, Ms. Hines this past year. Her legal training, not only just the legal training, able to really give a sharp focus on the issues, but also her experience as a classroom, many years of experience as a classroom teacher have been really beneficial for me as the chair and us as the school system in getting things moved forward. And I look forward to a similar relationship with you, Ms. Daranak Kofax, next year. And thank you, Ms. Hines. We have to continue on with making an organizational arrangement and appointments. So let me read this first. This is somewhat lengthy. Please bear with me. The recommendation, there's someone who have to make a motion for this one, but let me read this, is that the school board authorized organizational arrangements and appointments as follows. One, designate the following as regular business meeting days: July 25, September 12 and 26, October 10 and 24, November 7 and 18, which is Monday, December 5 and 19, 2013, and in 2014, January 9 and 23, February 6 and 20, March 6 and 20, April 10 and 24, May 8 and 22, June 5 and 26, and July 10 and 24. Regular business meetings are typically held on Thursdays. Special meetings, both committee work sessions and other special functions, would also be scheduled. Committees of three board members hear student disciplinary cases in closed meetings typically on Tuesdays. The board does not meet in August. The board's calendar of meeting days will be based on the school year and will be initially set and published in July. Two, set the salary of school board members at $20,000 per year and the debt of the board chairman at $22,000, and reimburse for local mileage at the federal mileage reimbursement rate for official school board business travel. Three, compensate the student representative for attendance at public meetings not to exceed $50 per day, and reimburse for local mileage at the federal mileage reimbursement rate for official school board business travel. Four, approve Richard Munusco Deputy Superintendent to serve as the superintendent designated to attend any meeting of the school board that the superintendent cannot attend. Five, appoint Pamela Goddard as executive assistant and clerk of the school board. Six, appoint Eva Rose and Lisa Torres-Balfeld as deputy clerks of the school board. Seven, appoint Tina Robinson and Brittany Waymeyer as deputy clerks of the school board for the limited purpose of assigning titles to school board vehicles, and appoint Arnold Dunbar, Katharina Barnes, Mahmoud Shik, Mary J. Thomas, and Roger Pearson as deputy clerks of the school board for the limited purpose of counter-signing payment warrants. Eight, appoint Monique Remy, Cheryl Egg, Doug Camber, Shakil Youssef, Jeremy Wilhelm, and Mayol Jopovitz as agents of the school board to examine, approve, and order payments of financial obligations of the school board. And appoint Christian Phan, Heidi Wilson, Analeska Escobar, Denise Shelton, Alexandra Stephens, Delilah Kalafi, John Laco as deputy agents of the school board to perform those functions in the absence of the agents. Nine, appoint Shakil Youssef as agent of the school board to approve disbursements made from all petty cash funds. Ten, appoint Michael Lunter as agent to examine, approve, and order payment in connection with the educational employee supplementary retirement system of Fairfax County only. And appoint Alison Kelly, Adolfo Crespedes, Kevin McCarthy, Helen Schiflet as deputy agents to perform those functions in the absence of Mr. Lunter. Eleven, authorize the chairman and clerk to sign all legal documents for the board other than those requiring the signature of some other officer, and authorize the vice chairman to sign in the absence of the chairman and the deputy clerks in the absence of the clerk. Number 12, authorize the Richard Munusco Deputy Superintendent and Susan Queen, Chief Financial Officer, to execute official documents relating to state, federal, and impact aid requiring the superintendent's signature. Thirteen, authorize Richard Munusco Deputy Superintendent and Susan Queen, Chief Financial Officer, to execute official documents relating to the Virginia documents of educational reports, documents requisitions, and order official correspondence in the absence of the division superintendent effective through July 2014. Fourteen, retain the following outside-the-law forms as assigned and managed by the Office of Division Counsel: the form of Hunter and Williams to provide general legal advice and litigation services, the form of Blanking, Schiff, Keith to provide general and special educational advice and litigation services, and the form of Latrell Menderson to provide workers' compensation services. Number fifteen, organize liaisons and committees to support the board's work. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Hines and seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote unanimous, the motion passes. Next order of business is recognition of Delegate Jim Scott. Let me call on Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. It is my honor to introduce this recognition of Delegate Jim Scott. I invite Delegate Scott and Marshall High School Principal Jay Pearson to come to the lectern at this time. Jim will retire after over 40 years of public service. He was the supervisor from the Providence District from 1972 to 1986 and has been a member of the Virginia House of Delegates since 1992, where he has represented areas including portions of the Providence, Mason, and McLean districts. During his career, Jim established himself as a champion of human rights and has been a collaborative, results-oriented leader. Notably, he introduced legislation to allow localities in Virginia to implement affordable dwelling ordinances to increase the availability of low-cost and workforce housing throughout Virginia. He introduced the legislation that created the Office of Secretary of Technology in the Commonwealth and worked on legislation to facilitate increased use of teleworking. As a member of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, he authored Fairfax County's Human Rights Ordinance and was also instrumental in the creation of the Office for Children and the implementation of the School Age Childcare Program, SAC. The Scott family has a longstanding involvement with Fairfax County Public Schools. Jim's wife Nancy has just retired as an ESOL teacher in Pine Spring Elementary School, and their daughter Mary Alice attended and graduated from Marshall High School, where both parents were active volunteers. On a personal level, I want to thank Jim for the wonderful partnership we have shared in the Providence District. He personally reached out to me on many occasions to discuss implications of pending legislative actions on our school system or to understand what was happening in Providence District schools. We shared times at community events ranging from Little League opening day to cultural festivals to high school graduation ceremonies. But this year, Jim was unable to attend the Marshall High School graduation. Principal Pearson planned to present him with an honorary diploma for his many years of support to Marshall as a parent, supervisor, and delegate. Mr. McElveen, himself a Marshall grad, and I were proud to accept the honorary diploma on his behalf. The members of this school board expressed their gratitude to Jim and send best wishes for an enjoyable next chapter in life, which I understand includes extensive travel and attending spring training. I now ask Marshall Principal Jay Pearson to offer some remarks and to present Delegate Scott with his honorary diploma, followed by a photo with the board and remarks by Delegate Scott.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Delegate Scott has always been a friend of George C. Marshall High School and Fairfax County Public Schools. He's a true public service, as you, public servant, as you highlighted, his many years of service to Fairfax County and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it's really an honor and a privilege for me to present an honorary diploma to Delegate James Scott from George C. Marshall High School. Delegate Scott, you'll always be a statesman.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all of you for your great service to this community. And as I suspect few of you know, my very first job, full-time job, was at Edison High School, where I served for one full year before deciding that there were other things that I was going to do. But I have never gotten away from the importance of public education, and I appreciate what all of you do here to make our county the very best in the country. And I want to welcome our new superintendent, and although I will not be in public service, I will be not far down the road, and I'm sure Nancy and I would be welcome any opportunity to help you and the other members of the school board in both of our retirements. It has been a great pleasure for me to represent Marshall in particular because of my Virginia heritage, knowing a lot as I do about the history of General George Marshall, and I think that it's still true that the only public school in the United States named after George Marshall is George Marshall High School. And I think that's a real testament to this community because there are a few public servants whom I honor more than George "President" Catlett Marshall. But let me say once again to all of you, Nancy and I very much appreciate your work, and I know that speaking now for a former school teacher, two former school teachers, Nancy is much longer than I, we appreciate your hard work and thank you for recognizing me in this very, very, very important manner. Thank you very much for all of you. To all of you and to the best wishes, please let me know if I can be of further service in the future.
of Information Technology. Let me call on Ms. Hines.
Well, this is very exciting. I sat down to two of these at my place at the table, so I will explain what that's all about, and believe me, I did not earn them. This is exciting. On behalf of the school board, I'm very pleased tonight to recognize the Department of Information Technology for winning a television Emmy Award in the category of instructional and informational programs for their program Flight School: On the Red Planet. And here's the DVD. I'd like to invite the following individuals to come up to the front by the lectern and accept the award. Amy Linehart, Jim Lepp, I will say Amy Linehart is FCPS producer, Jim Lepp is an FCPS producer, and Doug Baldwin, Chief of Educational Initiatives for the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum. This Emmy Award-winning film is a five-part series on aviation for middle school students and covers topics in science, technology, engineering, math, and history. The program was grant-funded and produced in partnership with the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum, which has been our educational partner for many years, helping to secure hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant funding and providing invaluable educational resources. The programs were offered to FCPS teachers and made available at no cost to teachers across the globe via DIT's Department of Information Technology's Fairfax Network. This grant-funded operation made the instructional content of Flight School available via TV, satellite, DVD, and web distribution to an average viewing audience of more than 10 million students per program. The series was distributed in 47 states, Canada, England, Russia, and numerous other countries. We congratulate all of you on this wonderful achievement. Also present tonight are a number of other staff members who assisted in the creation of the programs, and we'd like to invite everyone to the front for a group photo and presentation of the Emmys.
Congratulations. Next is something I announce with a mixed feeling, that I'm not necessarily happy that he's retiring, and he has retired, but he seems to be, she seems to be so much happier in retirement, so I have to be happy for him. So we have a resolution honoring Dr. Z. D. Dyer, our former superintendent. Before we have Mrs. Smith read the resolution, let me ask Mrs. Strauss for a different So on behalf of our students, our families, and our arts educators, we present you this Cappy, in appreciation for your strong support of the arts in our schools. And Judy, would you like to read the plaque?
Dr. Dale, this Cappy, the big one, is for outstanding performance by a superintendent with admiration and appreciation for enthusiastically supporting the arts, and especially for being an ardent Cappies fan. This was to be given on June 9th, 2013, but if you'll come up.
Okay.
Okay, let me ask Mrs. Smith to read the resolution honoring Dr. Dale, but Mrs. Smith, please do not cry.
So I know there's no crying in baseball, but there is crying in school board, but I think Janie got me out of it. I might be okay. Although when I first saw Dr. Dale in the hallway, that's when I teared up. So I am really happy that three of my colleagues from the 2004 board are here, because we have seen the power of the changes in this school system from the day Dr. Dale started. So I've been reflecting about this for a little bit, and I'm going to talk about some of the powerful things that I saw happen before I read the resolution. And when the, when the board in 2004 hired Jack, we were looking for a collaborative leader who would work, work well with us, the community, and the board of supervisors, and we absolutely got that in Jack. But I think the most powerful work we did was the work we did together to come up with the student achievement goals. The board at the time was very concerned that we were evaluating kids based on filling in circles, and we wanted a comprehensive way to, to provide an education when kids left our school system, they would be well-rounded. And that was the work we did together. But the real powerful work was what Jack did with our staff. And the culture in Fairfax County was very much, it's my school, I'm going to do what I want, and, and good things happened, but to really achieve for all kids, we had to change the culture, that there were certain non-negotiables, and that was Tessie's favorite word. And so those of us that, that were here in the beginning in 2004 hear different things, every child by name and by need, that the old model was one teacher standing in front of a classroom with many kids, but the new model is many teachers focusing on each individual child. Those have been powerful changes for the students in this system. I think it was so powerful, and it's a shame we didn't have more money, that Jack realized that teachers need to be paid more days of the year so they can do the collaborative work they need to do to plan. They can't get enough of it done just when the teachers are here. That is a great model that I hope that this country gets to, so that our teachers are paid and have the time to do the work they need to do. I remember the board meeting when we were talking about student achievement, and Phil and Stu started talking about PISA. Well, what happened with that? You took that and you ran with it. And we had powerful work, and listening to those high school principals talk about the power of that test for them learning and growing about their kids, powerful work. Phil and I went to NSBA and found out more about 21st century skills, and you just didn't listen to this board. You got involved at the national level with people working on 21st century skills. Your expertise, your listening, there were a lot of times when I would hear things from the board, and I'd be like, eh, and, and you would listen, and, and you would really come back and restate, okay, here's what the board wants, here's what we're doing, provide insight. But some of the most powerful work to me, I remember board members saying, the community doesn't understand why we're making decisions. So you kind of held our feet to the fire and said, okay, let's go through this Trego analysis, let's come up with budget priorities, what are we going to support in our budget? Let's align our resources. That was powerful work that I think set the school system on a good path for the tough budget times, because we, we talked about what are our priorities and what do we need to do first, and that changed over, over different years. Your passion for education, I think what I'm going to miss most is our meetings and just seeing your eyes light up when you talked about kids and education and what we need to do, and your commitment to teachers and our staff. I feel like you've changed the culture here in Fairfax County for the better for all students, and you've been responsive, I'm going to miss that. And I know you're going to do some fun things with your life, and it's hard for me to picture that you won't somehow stay involved with education, because I've seen your passion for it, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for everything you've done. Now I'll read the resolution. Whereas Jack D. Dale was appointed superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools on July 1, 2004, and served with distinction for nine years. And whereas he worked diligently with the school board to develop the beliefs, vision, mission, and student achievement goals as the strategic governance model was developed, so that together, we are building the future, child by child. And whereas he led Fairfax County Public Schools through the Great Recession, and despite declining resources, focused system resources to its students and classrooms, which ultimately resulted in continuing improvements in student achievement, narrowing of achievement gaps, and expanding full-day kindergarten to all schools. And whereas Dr. Dale's belief in teacher leadership led to a program that empowered teachers to assume positions of leadership in their schools and pyramids, to build professional learning communities and create successful collaborative learning teams. And whereas he worked closely with the business community and the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce to establish the education foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools, to bring the resources of our community to targeted needs and programs in our schools. And whereas Dr. Dale was a key leader in promoting 21st century skills, or the four Cs, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity, and encourage international learning experiences for both students and teachers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its sincerest commendation and deepest appreciation to Jack D. Dale for his visionary leadership, his commitment to public education in Fairfax, the United States, and across the globe, and his unwavering dedication to the staff, students, and families in Fairfax County Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, on behalf of the entire Fairfax community, extends its very best wishes to Dr. Dale and his family as they embark on their new adventure. I so move.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stork, all those in favor of the resolution, raise your hand. Okay, votes unanimous. Congratulations, Dr. Dale. Okay, we're going to have a couple of photo sessions. Board members and Dr. Dale with, where did Mrs. Dale go? Okay, she's over there. Okay, we will do that first, and then after the photo session is done, I am going to invite all the L team members and former board members to join the board for another photo session. Thank you. Okay, guys, everyone look right here. Come down. Okay, guys, right here. Guys, everyone right here, let's take a bunch of pictures, and a few more. Congratulations. Prince first, you want to come down, please? Prince first, come down. I'm in crust array. It's harsh, yeah. It's brutal. Am I doing this still? No, no, you, nobody hold this, or no? Okay, cool. You're in charge. I know, it's scary, guys. Okay, guys, everyone look right here, please. Count three, one, two, three, and again. Very nice. Oh, my God. Okay, board members? Back your seats, please. Okay, let me, Mrs. Stork? Now you want to say, the board members, you want to say, whoever remarks? Mrs. McLaughlin?
I didn't expect to be the first person, but what the heck, I'll kick it off.
...resources to its students and classrooms, which ultimately resulted in continuing improvements in student achievement, narrowing of achievement gaps, and expanding full-day kindergarten to all schools. And whereas Dr. Dale's belief in teacher leadership led to a program that empowered teachers to assume positions of leadership in their schools and pyramids to build professional learning communities and create successful collaborative learning teams. And whereas he worked closely with the business community and the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce to establish the education foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools to bring the resources of our community to targeted needs and programs in our schools. And whereas Dr. Dale was a key leader in promoting 21st Century Skills or the four Cs, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity, and encourage international learning experiences for both students and teachers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its sincerest commendation and deepest appreciation to Jack D. Dale for his visionary leadership, his commitment to public education in Fairfax, the United States, and across the globe, and his unwavering dedication to the staff, students, and families in Fairfax County Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, on behalf of the entire Fairfax community, extends its very best wishes to Dr. Dale and his family as they embark on their new adventure. I so move.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stork. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your hand. Okay, votes unanimous. Okay, we're gonna have a couple of photo sessions. Board members and Dr. Dale with LT Mrs. Dale go. We will. Okay, she's over there. Okay, we will do that first, and then after the photo session is done, I am going to invite all the LT members and former board members to join the board for another photo session. Guys, everyone right here. Let's take a bunch of pictures. And some more. Very nice. Prince first, you wanna come down, please? Prince first, come down.
It's brutal. Am I doing this still? No, no, nobody hold this, or no? Okay, cool. You're in charge. I know, it's scary, don't I?
Okay, guys, everyone look right here, please. Count three, one, two, three. And again. Okay, board members? Back your seats, please. Okay, let me, Mrs. Stork. Now you wanna say, the board members, you wanna say whoever remarks. Mrs. McLaughlin.
I didn't expect to be the first person, but what the heck, I'll kick it off. I had the pleasure of getting to meet Dr. Dale about five years ago when I was just a parent of three boys, getting involved in advocacy, and first thing I remember him saying in one of our meetings, when he said, "Well, why didn't you schedule time to come talk to me?" And I said, "You got 180,000 kids and all those parents, you don't need to sit around talking to somebody like me." And he said, "Oh, you're not the average parent, Megan." And that resonated with me quite well. I never forgot that. But I do wanna say that even though Dr. Dale and I have always had healthy differences of opinions on different things, we actually do share a number of things in common, and it's one of the things that I'll remember with fondness. The first is that we both hail from the West Coast, and I happen to think that's a tremendous quality to hail from the West Coast. We both happen to love lemon drop candy, and even more so, we enjoy fine red wine. And, but most importantly, we both share a tremendously deep affection for Fairfax County Public Schools, its amazing employees, its wonderful students and families and teachers, and for that, I really have enjoyed our time together, and I really do wish you the very best in your retirement. I hope you have wonderful travels around the globe, and especially time with you and your family, and it's so great to see you in this wonderful health here tonight, and so thank you for the time we've had.
Ms. Evans, to be followed by Ms. Seines.
Dr. Dale, I basically just wanna thank you so much for all of your dedication and all of your work for the last nine years. You know, it's hard to encapsulate nine years' worth of dedication such as you've had. I do wanna note, though, that you took us through some very, very difficult budget times, probably the worst that this school system has ever seen. You took us through record membership growth, and did so and remained strangely calm about it. So I always appreciated that aspect of your ability to guide this school system through some very, very difficult times. Moreover, and Mrs. Smith alluded to this already, but your leadership on the 21st Century Skills, I think, sent us on a new path, and that's something that we will continue. And you're to be congratulated for the fact that you sent us down this path and you became a national leader in this area. In addition, I just wanna thank you for the fact that you were a wonderful reader of top talent, and you brought an incredible team of people to this school system. I wanna thank you for all the time that you spent with board members, and in particular, when I was a brand-new board member, I came in with a special election, just one person, and you certainly made me feel welcome, and you did what you could to help me get my feet on the ground on this board. So I wanna thank you both personally and professionally for all that you've done, and I wish you and Val a wonderful, wonderful retirement. I hope you're back playing golf very, very soon.
Ms. Seines.
Thank you. One of the unexpected joys of this job has been getting to know so many new role models as an educator. I've met so many great people on the leadership team, just really the tops in the field, and it's been wonderful for me. And Dr. Dale, you are absolutely one of my role models in that respect. Your intellectual curiosity, you know, those four Cs, even as a classroom teacher six years ago, were on a sticky note next to my desk, because, and that filtered down from you. That was your idea, and I worked it into my own classwork, and I know that we continue to try to work it into what we do. Your intellectual curiosity, your flexibility and positivity, especially in a high-pressure, large school system like this, in a time of increasing accountability, a national conversation about education that's been very high-stress, a time of great growth and of tight budgets, and through it all, you have been sort of a calm center for all of us. You have been, for me, available and supportive, but also challenging. You know, there is nothing easy in what we do, and it's not enough to just have a great conversation about something. I always went away thinking, okay, I have work to do, you know? I have, I've started, but it's also my job to really understand what it is that we wanna do. And I knew that you'd be there to support me, and with kind and patient guidance, and I've always appreciated that very much. I think you've been an excellent spokesperson for this school system, and I think everyone would agree, on a national and even international stage, you know? I've seen you out there at national conferences and on Capitol Hill, and I feel like you've always been just, you've shown the school system in such a wonderful light, always. And, you know, the last few months, we've missed you. I think it's been maybe a chance to get used to not having you around, but it's also a chance to sort of start missing your calm and intellectually stimulating presence here. And I wish you all the best. I hope you keep in touch. I think you have unfinished work in education, and I hope you keep going somehow. But thank you so very much for all you've done for us.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. When you came, I remember you told us about your pilot's license, and I thought, yes, it's a risk taker, but then we said, but please don't fly while you're superintendent for us. And you had told us that in your previous school system, you had taken some of the local dignitaries up in the plane, but then the risk management said you couldn't do that anymore, so we asked, we didn't fly with you. One of the things that I've always admired, your tremendous belief in the power of the teaching profession, and I know when you came, we had great plans for elevating teacher leadership, more time for people to plan, and to be a role model for the world, and we had it all mapped out, and the Great Recession came, and how tough that was, and I know that that kept you up night after night, and how hard that was, because we had let some people go who were great, and we would have not let them go. And we had to dig deep in the school system to keep it together, but you never took away opportunities for kids. We did for adults. You took a lot of opportunities away for adults. But your dedication to the kids in the classroom and to the teachers in those classrooms held us together, and I know how hard that was. I can see going, hmm, sorry, too many memories. But I really admire you for that, and that was tough, and I don't know, not everybody understood how hard that was, but thank you.
Mrs. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jack, I, when we first met you, you had a style and a sense about you that was absolutely what we were looking for and what we needed at the time. For those of us who were new on the board at the time, who hadn't been part of the previous boards, where there had been a lot of friction and, I guess, frustration and really lack of collaboration, you provided that central, if you will, organizing theme around this board, and I think we saw, I know I saw the difference in the first few years about how we worked together and how we interacted together. I think that's kind of a core part of your personality. In fact, you and I share a love of a particular phrase, seek first to understand, and I know that that has been your default style, and I've sure tried to make it mine, because I think it's how we can learn and how we can understand and how we can truly listen to somebody and find a way to bring collaboration and to bring, I think, greater outcomes as a result of that. So I deeply appreciative of that. And the other part of, something I particularly valued is what you brought here, was your focus on quality assurance, quality assurance systems. I know that, I think, your own doctoral thesis on that, that I remember reading many, many years ago, but it kind of brought, again, part of an organizing principle to how we should approach doing things and doing things well. The two really came together, and I think Kathy spoke very eloquently about this, Ms. Smith spoke very eloquently about this, which is, when we did the strategic governance process, there's not too many leaders who are comfortable enough in their own skin and confident enough of themselves to really implement a new system that frankly could make their jobs particularly easier, but could make it a lot harder, because the reporting systems and processes and really management approach that I think the previous management process was pre-strategic governance was frankly not very good, and this was a much more powerful, much more frankly accountable system, but accountability, as we know, has two sides to it, and you rose to that, and you embraced it, and you made it real here. Your leadership on that, particularly in the community, when we moved on to, I think, the core part of strategic governance, which is our student achievement goals, and the way that you embraced what we collectively put together, and you essentially pushed that and moved that out of the system, and ultimately got people to really believe in it and really make it part of their culture and part of their habit and how they work with kids. Those are things that I will never forget, and things that I believe are the most powerful things I've done on this board. Operational expectations are clearly a fall under that, but the core of that was the student achievement goals. Our regret, I mean, I know our mutual regret is how the Great Recession kind of slowed down, or really made it difficult for us to even get fully implemented what we know is a powerful system, and I, and now we're, as you know, we're still struggling to try to find a way to realize some of those potentials. And we'll, we'll actually vote on one of your favorite items tonight, Passages Program tonight, so, and I know that that was always something that you felt, and I know as a board we felt, was truly what we're about as a system, which is, it brings together the different parts of our reporting process for student achievement goals into really the holistic student, you know? How are they doing overall, and not just in, you know, English or math or science, et cetera? And that truly, I think, is the power of some of the work that we've done, so I'm deeply appreciative of all that you've done. We missed you. I'm very glad to see you here, healthy and looking very comfortable, and particularly glad to see Val here, and it's a pleasure talking with both of you, and I wish you well and look forward to working and seeing you in the future. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Eleanor Korfak next.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. Dr. Dale probably doesn't remember when I first met him, but I met him at a meeting of the Fairfax County Association for the Gifted. It was his first year on the job. My son, who graduated in June, was nine years old at the time, and he was newly labeled as an advanced learner, and my family, we were trying to decide what to do with him. Should we send him to the center, should we keep him at the base school? At the meeting, I listened to lots of parents and Dr. Dale talk about why we had this program and what it meant to Fairfax County, and I really remember feeling overwhelmed and intimidated by the amount of information that was kind of being thrown at me. I remember really having to sum up a bit of courage to kind of raise my hand in this very educated room of people to really ask your help for a decision on what do you think would be best for my son and about the program. And what happened was, as you answered my question, I really began to feel at ease. You really spoke openly, and you were engaging, and you told me to give you a call if you had further questions. As a parent, that was amazing to me, and I remember thinking, this Dr. Dale is gonna be good for our schools. So you fast-forward seven years, and I find myself in a conversation with you again, and again, much is the same. I'm intimidated and overwhelmed at the amount of information that is being thrown at me. I again sometimes feel like I had to summon up the courage in our first meetings to ask you questions that were very much, why did you make that decision? I maybe didn't think it was the best. Can you tell me? Can you elaborate? And you were open, and you were honest, and you were genuine, and I appreciate that. And, you know, through some strange series of events during that time, that included an election, I became one of your 12 bosses, so, you know, but over the past 18 months, what we've had, I feel, is a working collaborative relationship, working together in partnership, and I have really appreciated that very much. I really am energized by the passion that you exhibit. I love hearing you speak, and when you talk about your passion for education, where you started, how each of your kids is different, how they each have different learning styles. I feel that I know them, and I feel that I, and that resonates with me as a parent, because I feel that you understand that. We've had the privilege of getting to know Val, and even though I don't know your children, I feel like through the stories you've told, I know them. So what I just wanna say is, I just appreciate getting to know you. I really want to wish you all the best that life offers, because you really deserve it, and I wish you well as you begin your next life adventure. So enjoy it.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As members of the board know, I like to document our time together in pictures, and surprisingly, I don't have too many pictures of you, Jack, which, which kind of means, I think, that number one, you never ate anything particularly embarrassing in front of me, or number two, you're particularly adept at avoiding my lens. Maybe Mr. Moon has some pictures of you eating something strange, but I don't. However, one of my favorite photos, which I just sent to the LT and school board members, is the screensaver on my iPad, which is, which I'll show you here. It was taken at our final retreat with you back in May, before the unpleasantness happened. And I love the picture, because it features the school board members standing around on one foot, kind of like flamingos, with our hands spread out, attempting to balance ourselves, and while we're doing a very good job at making fools of ourselves, you're sitting in the background, typing out emails on your iPhone. And I view this photo as a metaphorical representation of the job of the superintendent. While school board members hop around the room on one foot, flailing our arms and making fools of ourselves, it's the superintendent's job to ensure that we're grounded and focused and keeping our eyes on the most important issue, and you never lost sight of that most important student issue, as you've heard here tonight, which it was student achievement, and we, our system certainly has the gains to show for that. So I will send you that picture, and we wish you the best in retirement.
Madame Clark, is there a way for you to post that picture? Okay, is that up? Okay, good, good. Okay, now we'll go to Mr. Walcott. Mr. Walcott.
Jack, it was only last April that I discovered that you and I share the same genetic mutation that causes one to have a second stomach devoted to ice cream. And I hope that when the surgeons opened you up, they didn't discover that and think it was unnecessary and remove it. I'm also a little concerned, because lightning has the ability to seek the highest object around, and I know you've taken your share of thunderbolts, and I'm concerned that when you're gone, I think Mr. Stork and I might be catching those thunderbolts from Zeus, you know? But maybe that will permit Dr. Garza and Dr. Dockery to actually get some work done. So I think back on the nine years that you were here with FCPS, and I admit that when you first came, I really had never gone to a school board meeting. But when I look back on what I know, as Mrs. Smith has articulated, some very important work was done by you and the board in establishing our governance process. And then I think somewhere in the middle of the decade, one of the things I think happened to the school system is kind of a scene out of Star Wars, the trash compactor scene, and it was the combination of the economic downturn and no child left behind starting to crush our system from the outside. And I think you've provided leadership that helped us get through that very difficult period, and your focus on what's best for children and the kind of education that we want to deliver, I think you have protected our school system from things that could have been much worse. And I think you're going to, I think you're going to see, as I know you agree, that there's starting to be some consensus building in the country to make sure that we recover the things in education that potentially have been lost. So I hope that if education is part of your future, that you join us in manning the barricades there. So I guess another thought I wanna mention is, I have learned that not everybody can do that job that you have done for nine years, and you can do the job, and you've done it well. It's a difficult job, and probably the only days you get standing ovations are on the first day and on the last. We also know that, and I think the life of a superintendent is somewhat like that of a president, many presidents leave office in a very unpopular vein. Harry Truman comes to mind, and today he's now lionized. I won't tell you what my father used to call him. I myself am actually waxing nostalgic about Reagan, so there's hope. So... So, I really want to thank you for all that you've done. I wish you and Val the very best, and just wish you very, very well. Thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to repeat too much of what others have said, but as I was reflecting on my experience with Dr. Dale, a few things came to mind. Jack, you're one of the best communicators I've ever seen. You're one of the most prolific emailers that I've ever seen, too. I mean, I felt like I would email you anytime, day or night. Five minutes later, there you were responding, so always very responsive. I loved watching you in the classroom with students. I loved watching you with the leadership team and watching you with the board. I've learned a lot from you in terms of how you communicate and how you work with different people. I really feel that your passion, your sense of humor, your, your ability to really cut to the heart of things have shown through as we've juggled all kinds of problems. I know I often will say, gee, you know, should we do this? Did we think about that? And you'd come and you'd say, but what is it that we're really getting at? Let's try to peel back the layers, and let's try to think through of what's really important here. What do we really want to know? And last, I feel that you've been a wonderful teacher and leader, both to us as a board and to the leadership team. You've selected a wonderful cadre of individuals, and they reflect, I think, your philosophy and your skill, and I think that you should feel really good about that. And on a personal note, I know that you've got a nice little car that you'll be driving, and hopefully you're playing, you'll be flying, and you'll be enjoying yourself, and you'll be now focusing on the long term in terms of our 21st century thinking. And we're going to look forward to seeing you out there and still continuing to learn and, and work with you as we try to all pursue these goals of how to, you know, educate our kids in the best possible way. So, all the best to you and Val and your family, and thank you for everything.
Mrs. Church.
Yeah, the one person who didn't, although she got the acknowledgement in the pictures tonight, is saying something to, to the wife of a superintendent or anybody else who runs, you know, a corporation that's $2.5 billion, 24,000 employees, and faces a spouse in crisis. And as a wife who, the day I took office last year, faced a catastrophic health crisis with my own husband, I cannot tell you enough that you're happy for what you have and not unhappy for what you don't have. So, every day forward is a blessing because you came out of this one. And that's, you know, it's, it's the going forward at this point that counts. So, so good luck to you both.
Mr. Ash.
I've been a student in this school system for the past 12 years, and I've served my fellow students as a student leader for the past three. As a member of the Student Advisory Council this past year, I learned quite about, quite a bit about our current system. And one of the first things I learned from Dr. Dale was that the Student Advisory Council is in fact the superintendent's Student Advisory Council. He tasks us with the, with thinking about the future, which I think represents his ideals. He's always looking ahead and paving the way for a new era and thinking about the current, the current students, all while considering the fact that very soon there is going to be a new generation. He did, he fostered a great environment, which, which took care of misbehaving, overly energized kids like me, and managed to make, managed to create an environment in which we could focus and really get down and learn, but not just learn, really grow as people as well. And that's, that's really no small task. So, on behalf of the students of Fairfax County, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dale. I, I'm not going to repeat what other board members have said, but, you know, over the years, I have been so amazed on how you've been able to be so calm in turmoil, been able to, I, hold down your emotions within. And that's one of the best qualities that I aspire to learn from you. I am a long, long way to go to get there, but whenever I am faced with a situation that I, I find it difficult to stay calm, then I think about you. So, thank you, thank you. There were, there were a lot of memories that we had shared together. You know, some of those, you know, go back to the trips we had taken together with the invitation from Korean government and Taiwanese government, the presentations we made together, and all those food that we had together. And also, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss the moments that we had shared together, standing on the same stage at the leadership conference. I'm gonna miss the times where, you know, I joked around, you know, the similarity between you and me in terms of our looks and height and weight and et cetera. But, you know, about a dozen years ago, I myself had a little medical crisis, and at that time, I lost about 30 pounds. You seem to have lost quite a few yourself, and I look much better a dozen years ago after losing 30 pounds, but slowly and for surely I have regained all the 30 pounds. So, you need to be very careful with that. You look great. So, with that, I am going to invite you to come to the podium and make a few remarks. However, before, before you start, let me, let me say this, that we are very sad at the way, Dr. Dale, you had to end your time here at FCPS. It would have been great if you could have stayed until the end of your contract. I'm sure you feel the same way. But we would be remiss if you didn't recognize how the entire FCPS leadership team stepped up to the plate, and particularly Deputy Superintendent Rich Monisco. Please give Dr. Monisco an LT round of applause.
With that, Dr. Dale.
You actually took one of the comments I was going to make, was to recognize the leadership team for standing in for me over the last couple of months and providing that amazing leadership that we actually all work on developing together. So, I wanted to thank the leadership team for your doing so, Rich in particular, for stepping in. And as I know, when you and I would meet even during my medical recovery, your comments, I had no idea you had to do all that kind of stuff. And then the other person who stepped in tremendously is Chris Donahue, Chief of Staff. So, before I start, I would like to say congratulations, Mr. Moon, to another, I think this is your fourth, third, third time as the chairperson. I'm already looking forward to the next vote, I guess, huh?
Don't worry, I'm not being forced.
Yeah, okay. And then, Mr. Darnakofax, good luck in the role as the vice chair. You'll find out that is a mixed blessing. And of course, Karen, it's all yours, girl. Congratulations. What's very interesting is, I don't know when in Fairfax's history, a brand-new superintendent is being welcomed at the same time a retiring one is being recognized, because that did not occur on my watch, nor did I think it occurred in any of the previous watches. So, we're actually making history here together. And as much, as little that I've had the chance to interact with you, I know the system is in great hands, so best of luck to you and your husband, and maybe your husband can be as well-loved as Val has been. You learn an awful lot with your spouses, as you all know. I do want to thank everybody in the community, not just here in the room, but everybody for the outpouring of concern and well wishes that I've received over the last two months. It's overwhelming, but greatly, greatly appreciated. Every day, more things would come in, whether they be emails or cards, and as I think many of you have commented on, it's a time to look forward, I think Mrs. George was saying that, and reflect on how lucky you are. So, thank you very much for doing that. It's allowed us to understand the importance of, and I'll share this piece of wisdom and recommendation, balance in life. And as much as many of you commend me for being calm, what I learned was that was on the outside. So, make sure you take care of yourselves. Mr. Moon, as you aspire to emulate that, balance the inside, and you, with your knowledge and wisdom, I'm sure can do that better than I. So, I'll perhaps emulate you. So, tonight, what I'd like to do is share with you just about some comments in three areas. One, that I think a lot of you have referenced already is the people. A second area I want to comment about is the success in Fairfax because of our teamwork, and a little bit of how that comes about, and it doesn't happen by accident. And the third is, as many of you have talked about, is a little bit of looking to the future in education, or maybe even just in Fairfax. So, first, the people. As we all know, each year, there's these two major retirement ceremonies for, for people, one in the fall and one in the spring. Rich, thank you for covering the springs, wherever Rich went. There he is, yeah. So, I missed the stories, but what's powerful, powerful, powerful are the stories of those hundreds of employees. Their dedication is unwavering, but even more important, I think, and more salient is their skills, their knowledge and their skills and their leadership, on really two fronts. You'll see employees, all of them quite very humble, but all of them have been leaders in their own right in Fairfax, whether it be in teacher leadership programs, or whether it be in custodial, whether it be clerical, it doesn't matter. Each one of those people has a leadership story to tell. And then even more so, there's many of them who have been recognized internationally and nationally for their knowledge and skills in their particular area of expertise. We have employees who are walking across that stage with many advanced degrees, publishing books, articles, continuing to contribute to the profession. And yet, every year, during those retirement ceremonies, we lose hundreds and hundreds of years of expertise and experience, only to find out they've been replaced the following year by people of equal, or at least very equivalent and growing expertise, wisdom, and leadership in their profession. That does not happen accidentally. One of Fairfax's strengths has been it's very subtle, but very intentional, and I'll call it leadership succession commitment. And everybody sitting in this audience who's an employee knows about the different programs we have in place, or Karen, now you have in place, to nurture and develop leaders in the system. And so, you see that every year during retirement, these amazing people walking across the stage, only to then you find them being replaced the next year by even more amazing people because we continue to grow and develop. And it's another piece that's part of that, that we don't talk about much publicly, but every one of the employees will know this term, Fairfax family. As I joked in the, my leadership team's speech this last summer, you have to earn a spot at the family table. You don't just automatically get a place. But the way you earn it is to be that kind of a caliber of a person, committed to your profession. But more importantly, what happens, I think, in our Fairfax family, and this compelling desire to help others, is exactly that. You put other people ahead of yourself, and that's how we nurture and grow others in this system. People are very intentional about making sure other people have an opportunity to grow and develop and become a full-fledged member of what we call reverently, jokingly, but it's actually serious, the Fairfax family. So, that's something that's part of the culture that I inherited and did whatever I could to continue to nurture and develop it because it is so fundamental, especially in a large Second is, this, it's related to it, isn't this notion of teamwork, as many of you talked about, collaboration, teamwork. It's not easy. It is so much easier to be autocratic and dictatorial. It just doesn't work. It just doesn't work, especially in a large organization with wise individuals who are independent people, and they know best the challenges. How do we all begin to work together? We have, during my tenure here, even before then, spent a great deal of time and energy focusing on developing what we called professional learning communities. But the behind that is really teams. And what you're trying to create in teams is something that is extremely powerful if you can develop it. It's when you have shared vision, shared beliefs, and a shared passion on how to achieve your goals. The key word is shared. You don't get there just by sitting down over sushi or whatever your favorite, what was it, squid? And just talking about it. You have to work hard at it. You have to really work hard to develop what is genuinely then a shared vision, passion, and mission. And that's a piece that I think Fairfax continues to strive to achieve through our professional learning communities. One of the things we know very, very richly, if you will, in every one of the schools, and you can see this throughout the nation in successful schools, it's the schools that are successful are the ones that have the entire staff, teaching faculty, support faculty, everybody passionate about the mission, vision, and how you're going to achieve your goals. When that unity occurs, then everybody trusts everybody else to achieve it. If you haven't experienced teamwork like that, find someplace to do so. It's not easy to describe, but for those of us who have been part of a team, whether it be, you can do sports analogies, or you can pick it, a lot of our schools, it's a very, very powerful experience that you want to then replicate elsewhere. So, the power of teamwork is one that I think it sets Fairfax really apart from virtually every other large system in the United States, at least that I have seen. Now, let's talk about the future a little bit. As we know, all of our kids come from all corners of the world, something that is really our asset, something that is just amazing. We know that many of the kids speak more than one languages, one language. In fact, we know that many of our kids speak more than three. I was amazed, and I was polling some middle school kids several years ago, how many of you speak three or more languages? About half the room. We adults are way behind. So, we need to recognize that. Our kids are the world. And we also know that when you look at high-performing school systems in the world now, that it's not just about the academic performance, although we get a lot of ink and publicity around, you know, what's the US's relative stature in that area. But more importantly, what I learned, especially on many of these trips to different countries, many of which were with Mr. Moon to start with, is those other countries and those kids don't look internally, they look externally for wisdom, direction, learning, competition, survival, citizens in the global world. They are not egocentric like we are in the United States. I think we have a lot to learn from them and begin to emulate. And so, I'm real proud to see this board, in fact, embracing some additional verbiage which would suggest beginning to look at the world, because that's where our kids are, especially in Fairfax. They're going to be global citizens, they're not going to be US citizens, they're going to be global citizens, and they're going to be global competitors, they're going to be global businesswomen and men. That's just the realm. That's just the realm that they're in, and we need to catch up to them. Some of you mentioned the four Cs, well, that's what the kids are all about, they need to be able to think very critically around some very complex problems that we adults in our wisdom have left them. It's not an easy place in this world anymore, and especially as it gets smaller and much more instantaneous in reaction. So, as we begin to lead, and you continue to lead in whatever path we, any of us take in the future, I jotted down a few things about the future that I think help us reflect and perhaps then carve a path. One is, you have to change. If you don't change, you're falling behind, and that's really the US story right now in many of the education comparisons. It's not that the US has declined, US just did not change. But change imposed by others, we don't like, right? So, that leads me back to the teamwork side of things. I think change, when it's created through empowerment, it's extremely dynamic, energizing, and it creates sustained improvement, but people have to feel empowered for that change as opposed to having the change imposed on them. That's leadership. That's your job, leadership team's job, in my estimation. Shared vision, shared values, shared beliefs, not easy, you got to work at it, you just have to work at it. And the more the school board, leadership team, superintendent have shared values, shared beliefs, shared passion, shared goals, you're off and running. And that's true anywhere in the world, I believe. And what's even more important, we know it about schools, but it's less studied about school districts, but I think what we've come to learn in school districts in the world that are the most successful are the ones where there is tremendous alignment at the top, school board, superintendent, leadership team, and that's what drove me a lot, was to try and accomplish that. So as you prepare to head into that 21st century, actually the midpoint of the 21st century now, it's no longer the start, we all know that our kids come from around the world, and you all know, of course, and we all know that the community expects us to prepare our kids for the world, so that's kind of like givens. So you've got an amazing community, amazing workforce of people to support that amazing business community, to support the endeavors, and you also have an amazing set of people throughout the world that actually come to Fairfax to learn about us. So I would challenge all of you to go to the world and learn.
Thank you. Thank you. The beauty of this meeting is that I now get to leave.
Thank you, Doctor Decker, Godspeed. We'll take a short recess.
Okay, could I have a board members back? Bye there. Okay. We are on channel 21. We are back on. The next oral business is a presentation to the school board, which was supposed to be at 7:45. So we got some time to catch up. With the first one being citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the school board should arrange to be placed on the speaker's list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the school board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson. And while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Citizens are encouraged to write to the school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. Tonight, one citizen has signed up to address the board, Dr. Lawrence Bussey. Good to see you, Dr. Bussey. Thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you. I guess tonight's been a real celebration. Actually, it feels like church in here. And as I'm looking out, I thought I'd be preaching to the choir, but now it's just the board of trustees. But let me get to the people's business. Thank you, Mr. Moon, and members of the board for inviting me on behalf of George Becerra, who is chair of the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee. Mr. Becerra is a federal official, and right now he's on federal business and travel. I guess he's not affected by the sequestration. But he's asked me to come to address the new business that will be taken up this evening. We appreciate, we appreciative of the guidance and support that Mr. Stork has provided as layers on to the committee over the past two years, particularly his efforts to move forward the Parent Advocacy Handbook. We look forward to continuing this relationship for the next year. We also appreciative of the leadership and service of Dr. Dale has given to the Fairfax students and community. We wish him well in his commencement to the next phase of his life and his career. And on that note, also, we'd like to welcome Dr. Garza as the new superintendent. The first new business we'd like to address is the adoption of the charge to the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee for next year. The charge states, "Ensure that school system efforts to close all aspects of the achievement gap for underrepresented minority students remain on course." In addition, the committee should review and report on efforts to develop an annual student growth model to ensure that it measures student achievement, student growth, and extent to which the achievement gap is closed. The committee endorses this charge. And particularly, we look forward to reporting on alternate ways to measure student growth without stigmatizing groups of students as the current system currently does. We look forward to reporting on our findings as soon as we can. The second new business is Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. The recommendation to accept the Virginia Department of Education's designation of Fairfax County Public Schools as the Governor's Regional School for Science and Technology in Northern Virginia for 2013-14. I refer you to the committee's previous testimony concerning Thomas Jefferson, but I'd like to highlight some key concerns we have with respect to Thomas Jefferson. We have provided in the past five recommendations. One, to create other governor's schools focused on the arts and other disciplines to offer choice and options to fix the capacity issue. Rattically change the admission requirement for test-taking to previous performance by taking the top 5 or 10% of GPs, of GPAs of each middle school's seventh and first quarter eighth grade class. That is also that Level 4 centers should be counted separately. Three, expand the parent outreach to underrepresented communities to encourage more underrepresented minority students to apply for follow-up on the Blue Ribbons Commission's recommendation for formal monitoring and evaluation of the admission process. And finally, implement the advisory committee with MSA's participation. Again, attached are our testimony we've previously made in September, and I refer you that to expand and revise the remarks made here this evening. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak for the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Bussey. Thank you for waiting until this time to make your presentation. The next, we have student representative matters, Ms. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am honored to accept this duty of representing all 184,000 students to this great school board. I've already had the opportunity to get to know some of the board, and I look forward to working with all 12 of these fantastic individuals, as well as the entire staff. Dr. Garza, we welcome you. And over the course of the next school year.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Now we go, are going into action items. The first being passages, monitoring, report, and presentation. Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. It's my pleasure to introduce the motion to request the school board to accept the passages, monitoring, report, and presentation as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Strauss. Mr. Stork, you want to speak on your motion?
Just very brief, just very briefly, the passages report is really a summary of the overall accomplishments of the Fairfax County Public School students with respect to our student achievement goals. And those goals reflect a lot of different measurements. Really, the passages report brings together the different individual reports that we get throughout the year, including those for science and math and English, et cetera. It also helps us to give a more holistic view of the student, what they are doing, how they're doing overall, and really ensure, really gives probably the best judgment overall about what the school system is doing on behalf of students. So we think this is one of the most important presentations we get all year. We learn a lot. We also learn some areas that we need to, I guess, focus more attention, and I think the report this year did exactly that. So with that, I would ask the board's support.
Mrs. Strauss.
So I would like to thank all the, all the staff who worked on this. And I'd also like to thank the board members for agreeing to go down the path of creating the passages report as we try to get the best picture we can of how our students in the entire school division is performing, knowing that we need many different views and, as Mr. Stork says, sort of the higher level, the way above in the clouds level down at the schools. But there was a great deal of work that went into the creation of this. It was an excellent presentation, by the way, Dr. Breeden. And we took a risk as a school division in developing this kind of a report just as when we did the PISA pilot. And we continue to search for ways to be transparent, to look at ourselves, to look at our students in, in the most helpful way. So again, I compliment everyone who worked on that. And I hope as a board, we continue to, to find ways to analyze ourselves so that we can learn more about how to continue to improve day-to-day classroom instruction. So, thank you.
Any other board member? Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I really just want to second what Mrs. Strauss just said. I wanted to thank staff, particularly Dr. Breeden, for this excellent presentation. This is my favorite all year. If we only got one report, I would hope it would be this one. It provides just the right level of information. It shows trends. It's well done. And I know a lot of time and effort went into it, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Any other board member? Now, we'll now then vote on the motion, which is the school board to accept the passages, monitoring, report, and presentation as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, vote is unanimous with Mrs. Strauss away from the table. The motion passes. The next, we have confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding students who have been recommended for expulsion by the division superintendent. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. The first motion will come from Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I move to expel a student for participating in gang activity at school to include gang recruitment and initiation.
Seconded by, seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Vote is unanimous with Mrs. Strauss away from the table. The next motion comes from Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I move that the chairman of the school board be authorized to execute on behalf of the board contracts for all members of the leadership team as discussed in closed meeting.
Seconded by Mrs. Smith. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Vote is unanimous. The motion passes. And, and thank you to all the LT members who have always been working very hard. And Ms. Evans, we have another motion related to our real property.
I do. I move that the school board authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services in consultation with legal counsel to negotiate on behalf of the board a contract to purchase, a contract of purchase for certain real property in accordance with the discussion in closed meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. Ms. Evans, you want to speak on your motion?
I wasn't planning to.
Okay, if not, I think Mr. Stork might want to make a brief comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm very interested in, in this promising opportunity. I just wanted to really identify my own reservations. I think this vote is premature, at least for me it is. I need more than a 20-minute briefing in order to be able to make, I think, a sound and reasonable judgment and really to execute what I consider my fiduciary responsibility. So look forward to learning more about this opportunity. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a point of procedure in that I seconded the motion.
Okay. And Mrs. Strauss?
I, I did second the motion, and I do greatly appreciate the endeavors of Mr. Plattenberg and the facilities and transportation staff in providing a unique and out-of-the-box opportunity for us to address our capital needs. And I know that this Bailey's is not in my district, but it doesn't mean that we don't care for students across different schools in other districts. And so I want to make sure that any efforts that we do are looked at from a division perspective. I do hope that we get additional information because the briefing was short. But I do feel like the amount of information that I received allows me to, in good faith, allow, because this is not a definitive decision. This, we're just moving forward. And I, I trust that the facilities staff will continue to endeavor to provide us information potentially as early as Monday. But I do think that this is a good, a good move for us to do at this point.
Okay. Before I go, Mrs. MacLachlan, let me tell the board members that I am trying to schedule a closed meeting on this topic again sometime during the day on Monday. And Mrs. MacLachlan.
I wanted to make sure my colleagues and also leadership team understood that I do share Mr. Stork's concern. I think this is a wonderful prospect, and I really appreciate the work, as Ms. Schultz said, of Mr. Plattenberg's department on this. Without question, I think it's a wonderful possibility. But as I tried to urge my colleagues in closed session, I absolutely don't understand why we can't wait until Monday's closed session to have a more thorough understanding before we, as a board, vote on greenlighting this very important action. And so I really wish, given what Chairman Moon has said, that we're going to have a closed session on Monday, I think there would be value for waiting. So, thank you.
Okay. With that, let's take a vote on the motion. This is to, which is the school board authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services in consultation with a legal counsel to negotiate on behalf of the board a contract of purchase for certain real property in accordance with the discussion in closed meeting. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Terona Kofex, Reed, McElvin, Hines, Moon, Strauss, Evans, Schurz, Velkopf, Smith opposing? MacLachlan abstaining. Is it Mr. Stork? The motion passes. Next, we have a concern agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a concern agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the concern agenda have gone through a board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the concern agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of June 28, 2013 regular school board meeting. 5.02, adopt policy 2201, compulsory attendance requirements as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Shantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsible dealer, Siemens Industry, Inc., in the amount of $897,200 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Trainsfield Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible dealer, Siemens Industry, Inc., in the amount of $376,300 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.05, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the concern agenda? Hearing and seeing the objection, the concern agenda is approved. So, Mr. Terona Kofex, you want to take over? Okay. Yes, please. The new business. I have found my place.
No. All right, new business. Okay, the following new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve the revenue and expenditure adjustments as detailed in the agenda.
Do you want to introduce?
And Ms. Quinn, would you like? You're over there. Please give us a brief review. Thank you.
Testing, I think it's on. Okay. All right, this is the final budget review for FY 2013, and the first time that FY 2014 budget will be revised since the adoption in May. And just a reminder, the budget for the current year does get revised through the quarterly reviews. And the next time the budget will be updated is the mid-year review. And we don't typically do a first quarter review since the financial activities in the system is very limited, since it's only been three months. very limited since it's only been three months. So, as always, the results in this agenda item are subject to the annual audit by external auditors. Any adjustments from the audit will be reflected in the next review, which is the mid-year review. In summary, all of our 10 school board funds ended the year with positive balances, which was not the case last year, so this is a great year. We did have a fund that ended with a negative balance last year, so this is actually a good year for us. So, as for the school operating fund, it ended the year with an available ending balance of $55.7 million after accounting for the budgeted beginning balance for 2014 and other commitments. This represents approximately 2% of our operating budget. And of the $55.7 million, we are recommending adjustments of $11.1 million for 2014, which I will detail later, and the remaining $44.6 million will be set aside for budgeted beginning balance for 2015. So, to review the operating fund in a little bit more detail, starting on page one of the attachment, I'm going to kind of go through some of the revenue adjustments and some of the expenditure adjustments. So, on top of page one of the attachment, sales tax receipts are projected to be $1.9 million more than the budgeted, whereas the state aid is actually down by $900,000 and that's primarily due to the lower-than-projected enrollment for our ESOL students. And the sales tax receipts have been trending higher in the past six months. Typically, this, this last year, we actually had sales tax that increased over last year each of the month except for one, but as you probably heard in the current news, sales tax receipts could be impacted by some of the impending furloughs based on sequestration. So, we will be monitoring sales tax receipts closely to ensure that we are on target with our projections in 2014. The majority of the variance in the federal revenue is a result of unspent multi-year grant awards, mostly IDEA, and you'll see the corresponding various, on the variance on the expenditure side of the ledger under item 2B. Increases in other revenues of $2.8 million are primarily in the miscellaneous revenue accounts, which are historically budgeted on the conservative side. This is mainly tuition and fees and some of the rebates that we receive from our independent stationers and our procurement card vendors. So, in total, our actual revenues were 99.7% of the third quarter estimate, resulting in a shortfall of $7.8 million. However, when you exclude the unspent grant awards, the revenues are actually $4.5 million higher than what was budgeted for 2013. So, on the expenditure side of the ledger, under item two, you'll see that the first item is the expenditure variance of $51.1 million. That was expenditures that came in less than what was projected, so those are the savings. And that's after accounting for the budgeted beginning balance, the flexibility reserve, undelivered orders, and other commitments. And it also excludes the unspent multi-year grant balances. The majority of the savings, $34.6 million, is from the compensation accounts where the salary lap savings from turnover and vacancies were greater than projected. Our retirement numbers are staying at, I guess, the higher numbers that we've seen in the last couple of years. So, even prior to the recession, the retirement numbers are greater than the levels that we had. So, that's generating more savings in their compensation file. But if you recall, when we built the 2014 budget, as a result of this trend, we actually lowered the compensation base going into 2014. If you remember, we took a savings of approximately 30-some million dollars as a result of some of the turnover and lowering the starting salaries for some of our vacant positions and how we budget those positions. In our utility accounts, the weather combined with the lower natural gas prices worked in our favor. The utility accounts generated a savings of approximately $5.2 million. The favorable natural gas prices will continue into 2014 and also we took a reduction in our utility accounts when we built the 2014 budget. We've also experienced lower fuel prices than what we had budgeted, which was the primary reason for the $1.9 million savings in our vehicle services. All of our buses and vehicles are maintained by the county and we get a charge back from the county, including the fuel, and we were able to save close to $2 million in those accounts. We are also seeing, continuing to see conservative spending in our offices and our schools in light of the current fiscal environment and trying to plan for multiple, multi-year needs. But this year-end, what we did was we did limit the carryover for our schools' automatic carryover to 25%. And by limiting that carryover, we were able to generate some additional savings, which are included in that $51.1 million. And then on page two of the agenda item, the very first item represents the amount of the multi-year grant awards that were not yet expended and that amount will be re-appropriated in 2014 for our schools to be able to expend those grant awards. So, this brings our total expenditure savings to $63.5 million, which results in the funds available of $55.7 when you include the shortfall on the revenue side of $7.8 million. That's how we came with the available ending balance of $55.7 million. Now, going down on the rest of the agenda, these are the details of what we're recommending for 2014. I mentioned earlier that we are recommending spending $11.1 million in FY 2014. So, these adjustments are detailed under the Roman numeral item number three. And just as a reminder, when you see a little X next to the item means it's a non-recurring one-time expense item. When you see a check mark next to the item means it's a recurring item, which means it will, we will need to fund the item going into 15 and beyond because it's a recurring expense item. So, the first item is requesting funding to purchase elementary printed level readers for the science curriculum that match the new language arts standards. And these are all printed readers. And this recommendation is on the year-end agenda because it's a one-time purchase of these readers and any replacement will be done through the school's allocation of the textbook funds. That's why this particular item is on the year-end agenda rather than having, having had, having had it included in the approved budget when we adopted the budget back in May. Item B is to increase preventive maintenance. This is to meet the tenure plan that was included in the consultant's plan. If you recall during the budget adoption in 2014, we reduced preventive maintenance. And as Mr. Plattenberg shared with you last Tuesday evening, our maintenance program is reversed from best practices as we spend most of our, most of our hours on reactive rather than preventive maintenance. So, this brings it back to the tenure plan that was recommended by the consultant. The next two items are related to bus purchases. Item C is to recommend an outright purchase of 25 buses from savings in the transportation accounts, including the fuel savings from 2013. So, in 2013, we had transportation savings of approximately $3 million. We're recommending using that particular savings in those accounts to outright purchase 25 buses in 2014. The next item on top of page three is, is requesting approval to lease purchase an additional 90 buses in 2014. And you'll see that the amount is zero because in this particular lease, master lease agreement, the first payment is not due until 2015, but we need the approval to sign the master lease to purchase the 90 buses in 2014 with the first payment due in 2015. Item E is a recommendation to allocate $235,000 to develop standards for working conditions as discussed at the school board work session in April. This is developing the standards for the working condition survey. And item F is a recommendation to add two staff attorneys and one support position in the division, division council's office as it was discussed back in the June work Item G on top of page four is to fund the music assessment trips related to the fine arts program. If you recall, last year, we added $500,000 for the marching band, marching band program for some of the required trips related to the classes. And this particular line item will now fund the assessments for the orchestra, the choir, and the guitar classes that are required as part of the class. The next item is to provide the necessary training related to emergency first aid and CPR training for staff applying for the initial licensure or for the renewal. This is new, effective July 1, and it's another unfunded mandate from the state. This is also a preliminary estimate, so as plans get finalized, any unspent dollars or unspent funds will be returned when we do the mid-year budget review. And then the last item on this page is to just request position authority for the additional advanced academic resource teachers. You added funding of $500,000 in the 2014 budget. This is to add the positions that goes along with the $500,000 and the school, there are 13 schools, we're adding half a position to those 13 schools listed on the agenda. So, that brings the expenditure adjustments for 2014 to $7.5 million, but if you go to the top of the next page, it's a transfer for the major maintenance to the construction fund. And we have to separate, separate out when it's an expenditure and when it's a transfer, but this is for the major maintenance that was included in the 2014 advertised budget that was eliminated as part of the budget adoption in 2014, and that's $3.6 million. So, when you add the $7.5 million and $3.6 million, the total recommended adjustments for 2014 is $11.1 million. So, again, out of the available balance of $55.7 million, $11.1 is recommended for 2014 and $44.6 million is recommended to be set aside going into 2015. Now, on the next page is a preliminary look into 2015, okay? You've seen this chart, should look familiar to you because this is a chart that we shared when we adopted the 2014 budget, okay? We did make some additions, adjustments since then, but this is what our preliminary projections are for 2015, okay? So, the top portion of this chart lays out where we think our revenue picture is going to look like for 2015. We had one-time funding of $82.7 million. That was your budget-toBeginning balance as well as the VRS reserve that we used to balance the 2014 budget. We also had one-time funding from the state for the compensation incentive of $6.3 million. And again, that third line item is the adjustment that we're projecting for LCI changes to FCPS in the next biennium of the state budget, and that could be as high as $60 million. Again, that is a preliminary estimate. So, at a quick glance, our revenues are going to be down $149 million in 2015 as compared to 2014. Now, that middle section of the chart talks about some of the major drivers into our budget. We're going to have membership growth. That'll be $25 million. We are anticipating an additional 2,700 students for 2015. We anticipate that VRS rates will increase. That'll cost $36.8 million. The impact of the 2% market scale, that will go in, in January of 2014. In 2015, we have to fund the full year of that 2% and that'd be an additional $15.9 million. And that next line item are the recurring items that I've just detailed that we put into the 2014 recommendations. Again, those are the recurring items, so they have to be built into the 2015 budget and that's $4.5 million. So, your projected expenditure changes, $82.3 million. And when you add that to the revenue shortfall, we are at $231 million gap. But before we all panic, the next two line items actually are going to reduce that gap slightly. We just said we were going to set aside $44.6 million into the beginning balance for 2015. The county did include a 2% increase as part of their 20, as a guideline in their 2014 budget. That generated $34.3 million. So, an additional $78.9 million against a $231 million deficit will now give us, gives us a preliminary deficit before any salary adjustments or any other adjustments into the 2015 budget of $152 million. When you pass the 2014 budget, you had said, let's build in a compensation increase for 2015 with the preference to step increase, $43 million, and now we're facing $195 million going into 2015. You'll get additional information on the fiscal forecast for 2015 in September, but this is the starting point for 2015. Okay, on that good note, I'm going to move right on to the other funds. As for the other funds, starting on page seven, they all did end with positive balances as I mentioned earlier. And just to highlight some of the significant items, the construction fund added to the ending balance in 2013, but we anticipate that the ending balance will be spent down in 14 and 15 as the CIP requirements are greater than the bond sale allocation for those two fiscal years. And then as for the food and nutrition services fund, the ending balance also decreased and that's a result of lower food, food sales. The lunch participation has dropped since the implementation of the new meals pattern and that was part of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, but that was a trend throughout the entire country. Most of the jurisdictions have lost lunch participation due to the new meals pattern. We've also offered on the good news side, we offered free lunch as well as free breakfast to those students that were eligible for reduced meals. So, we were able to provide free lunch and breakfast to those students, but that also did have an impact to the bottom line. The school insurance and the health and benefits funds are primarily self-insured, meaning that we are our own insurance companies. On the insurance fund side, the claims experience was lower than projected and therefore the funds allocated reserves increased by $3.2 million. Conversely, on the health and flexible benefits fund, the actual claims are trending much higher than our budgeted or our projections. So, with claims being higher, revenues being lower, we're actually dipping into the reserve in the health and flexible benefits fund. So, our current projections show that at the end of 2014, we are going to be dipping into the reserve even further and what will be remaining in the premium stabilization fund will be approximately one month worth of claims. The industry standard tells you that your reserve should have two to three months of claims in your reserve. So, we are using down the reserves in the health and flexible benefits fund. So, you know, as the claims get higher in that particular fund, it translates to higher premiums for the employer and employee share of the health costs in the coming years. So, we are going to see some pressures on the 2015 budget as well for the increased premiums for the health plan. And then for the retirement funds, the local retirement fund as well as the OPEC trust funds, just like prior years, we don't have the actual June investment activities, so what's reported on the agenda are the estimates and any final adjustments. So what's reported on the agenda are the estimates, and any final adjustments will be reflected during the mid-year review. And then the fund statements for all the funds start on page 11, and the last page of the agenda packet includes the quarterly update for the grants development activity as of June 30, 2013. We do have a work session scheduled for Monday, but I would be happy to take some questions tonight.
Board members, me who would like to speak. Okay, all right. Mr. Storck, I saw you first.
I wasn't sure if you'd called me.
Yes.
I have kind of a tongue-in-cheek question, to be honest. Given the potential for the local composite index to be changed, which is part of what you reference in your budget projection, how confident are you that we'll be treated the same way as the counties were four years ago when that adjustment took place and they were held harmless during the...
But if you recall, I think we lobbied really hard and said, you know, we need that extra funding. We played fair with the local composite indexes going up and down all these years. Now it's time the rest of the state pays Fairfax as our local composite index goes down. So we, I think, experienced favorable results from that, the last two bienniums, but come 2015, our expectation or we anticipate that index will go up for us, meaning we'll lose state revenue, meaning I don't think the rest of the state is going to want to hold us harmless.
You don't think that's going to happen this time? You know I'm teasing you, but isn't that the fair thing to do? And shouldn't we actually make that part of our legislative package to at least identify that if they didn't have to take this kind of hit the first year that it changed, then we should have a reasonable, similar expectation on our part that if this were to...
Absolutely.
...rate were to go up, that we should be able to be held harmless at least for the first year or two. So I think I'm just, I'm making that point, and I know that we'll have a long discussion about this, but, and I share your concern that it will go up and we will be, there will be at least an effort to reduce our state funding, which I would point out to anybody who wants to know or listen, the funding for education in the state of Virginia is actually lower than it was five years ago. Five years ago was about a billion dollars higher than what it is today. So I don't want anybody to think that this is per se a Fairfax County issue. This is a statewide issue, and our state legislators need to look at this and recognize that if they truly want to make education a priority, then they need to look at what they're funding because they're not funding it as the priority that they say that it is. And I would challenge all of them to do just that because the folks who have to try to make this work and educate students need their help. And particularly given what we face for next fiscal year, we absolutely need the help of all of the legislators in this Northern Virginia area because I think it will affect clearly all the Northern Virginia school districts will probably have a similar impact. So, thank you. Ms. Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Storck. Next I have Mr. McElveen, followed by Ms. Schultz, and then Ms. Strauss.
Just to follow on what Mr. Storck said, I think that's a good suggestion, including that. Another very disgusting piece of information in this is that we're paying $400,000 for CPR training. We faced a similar thing with EpiPins last year, and we're going to have to lobby very hard on this. There's supposedly the anti-mandate working group. I don't know how these keep getting in our budgets. But just one question on the contents of this report. We had seen a preliminary report at one point that said that there would be funding for more PISA testing. Where in the process did that get dropped out?
I believe when we were discussing how either PISA or some of the other assessments related to student achievement goals might be funded, I think we felt that we needed a little bit further discussion before we added anything on this particular agenda item. We can always add it at mid-year once we determine what type of assessment and which schools, number of schools that would be participating.
Thank you.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
First of all, I apologize, Dr. Garza. This is a large number, and it's going to be tough, I fear. First of all, I was glad to see that we're going to purchase some buses outright. I remember in the good old days when we didn't have to lease purchase at all, and I remember losing that fight because it is cheaper to buy them outright if you possibly can. But I understand that we need to do the leasing, we're just in that corner. When will we get the first revenue projection for 2015 from the Board of Supervisors, knowing that the real estate market, particularly residential real estate, is up?
I think the first joint meeting of the board and Board of, School Board and the Board of Supervisors on the fiscal forecast is going to be early November. I'm not sure the county will be ready to share, you know, and we've been hearing in the news about the residential real estate market turning around. But what I've also been hearing is the commercial market is not doing well.
Right. And I'm also hearing that they're with, if they don't resolve the sequestration, they may be in the bar layoffs in defense contracting, and it's, which will affect us. Something else, do the Board of Supervisors, do they anticipate significant revenues when they do their fourth quarter in September, when they close their budget year? Any idea?
Significant, I'm sorry.
Well, what they're, in other words, what will, what kind of year-end balances will the Board of Supervisors, do you think they will see in September? And will there be any increased revenue over what they projected?
There could be, but we have not been able to, and we haven't been privy to any of their year-end numbers yet. I think there's still, they closed their fiscal year a little bit later than we do. We close our fiscal year probably two weeks prior to them closing their fiscal year. So I think they're in the midst of preparing their carryover package, and I think the earliest we're going to know is probably early August to mid-August before we could see whether or not their revenues came in higher than the projections and what type of, type of ending balance that they will have it for the 2013.
Right. Well, I wanted to share with my colleagues, some years ago when Kate Hanley was chairman of the Board of Supervisors, we worked out a deal with the Board of Supervisors that if there was additional revenue that was recognized when they closed their budget in September, that revenue was shared, I believe 50/50 after they spent...
Funded the stabilization.
Right, whatever, right, stabilization, right. And I think we might want to consider that again. We're just going to have to come to terms with the Board of Supervisors as to how we're going to share a little bit better with this because a 2% increase from them is simply not going to be enough. And then if there are more revenues, I think we have to figure out a way to share them better.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Two thoughts. One is that, as we've heard for years now, Virginia is one of the strongest economies in the United States. I think we rank among the top seven, top 10. And yet, when you look at where we rank in terms of public school revenue and funding per the income of our residents in this Commonwealth, we rank toward the bottom. And so based on the other data that we were hearing by Mr. Storck on the cuts to funding since five years ago, I think it's going to be really important for this board to help lead the other school districts around the Commonwealth of Virginia to finally say that as Virginians, we're a successful Commonwealth, and we need to start committing ourselves to public education because I do believe it's something that the voters believe in, and it's time for us to leave that message. My one question, and I don't mean to oversimplify it, but this assessment is saying that we estimate we may have 2,700 new students. And forgive me that the math I'm going to state, I know, is overly simplified, but it does raise a question. With 2,700 new students and approximately 200 schools in our system, it's about an average of 13.5 students per school that we would be gaining. And I realize we don't gain them all evenly distributed, but I think one of the things I would like to see as a board member is, over the last five years when we've gained these students, where are we gaining them in terms of how many schools? Because there are going to be schools where it's not going to cost 25 million to absorb these 2,700 students. We could very well absorb them and not have to have any staffing at all in some of these schools. So I think it might help if we could have a little context.
That's correct. And at this point, when we do the preliminary estimates, we have to try to do an average, typically what it would cost when we add enrollment. So what we did was we took an average of the last three years based on those actual calculations. So if you remember, when we actually do the superintendent's proposed, we actually recalculate that membership growth. So even though we're giving you this estimate of 25 million, that is our best estimate right now, but when we do the superintendent's proposed, we will take the growth in those individual schools and recalculate membership cost.
But over the last, you know, five years of when we've been doing this, how do our calculations match up to what we estimate? Because as I said, I mean, 25 million is a substantial number.
It matches up very accurately because we're calculating the actual projected membership by school. You know, we are recalculating, this is kind of like, you know, even though we give you an average estimate for the fiscal forecast, when the superintendent's proposed budget comes out, we have the best projections at that point on where we think the growth will happen throughout the system. And based on that growth, we apply all the staffing ratios from scratch and recalculate that cost of growth. And then we do it again at the approved stage because we have more up-to-date numbers in those membership projections. And then in the fall, if we have a school that didn't, did not have the growth that we anticipated, this is where we use the staffing reserve. Some of the positions come back into the staffing reserve, and some of the schools where we under-projected, we provide staffing through that staffing reserve to meet the needs of that particular school if we under-projected for that school. So there's movement in that staffing reserve in the fall.
But technically, there are schools that could add students and absorb them without needing to add any staffing at all.
Absolutely. And that will happen when we recalculate the membership at the proposed stage and at the approved stage. So if you say, you know, just for a simple example, if you had two student growth in a particular school, and in their staffing ratio, they could absorb the two students, we would not provide another teacher. But another school, if you had a growth of one student, but that one student could trigger another teacher based on that staffing ratio. And also for like kindergarten, so if you had a growth in the kindergarten class, we have a cap. So when you have one additional student above that cap, we are going to generate a kindergarten teacher. So it's all based on the formula and the up-to-date projections we have for that particular school at the proposed and the approved stage. So even though we say it's, our estimate is 25 million here, when we actually develop the proposed budget, we will recalculate based on the numbers we have at that time per school.
Thank you. And Ms. Schultz.
This is said with great love and affection. I feel like this is my, I just need to have a canned speech on, on projection methodology. And if we don't get the projections right, everything else from that point forward is wrong. So Mr. Plattenberg, who's peering at me over his glasses, you know, this is the thing. It is crucial to have a correlation between where these students are expected and the budget that is associated or attributed for these students. Because Ms. McLaughlin is exactly right. If you are going to acquire these students, and we're not just going to get 2,300 students mystically and magically appear on the doorstep, there's got to be an understanding on a student density map, you know, by cluster, by school, where these expected students are coming from and where they're expected to be. And we know what those staffing ratios are. We cannot have a full attribution of the cost of a student associated with every one of those 2,300 students because there are going to be students that are going to be absorbed into the system. So this, this is, I feel like this is like an annual discussion, or more than annual discussion. Why can we not have a greater degree of accuracy at this point, we're at the final budget review? And why can we not dovetail the expectations of where students are going to show up in a couple of months with where we have space available and who's really going to cost the system new staffing versus who's going to be absorbed into existing classrooms? Because the 23 don't materialize out of thin air on, you know, September 30th in our numbers. We know coming into the first week that we're going to have increases because registration is happening now, is it not?
Some. That's why we have the staffing meetings in the fall to reconcile what has been projected for that school.
But not all the places have to be reconciled, right, Ms. Quinn? There are places where...
Every school is looked at, and I'm kind of turning to Dr. Pejard over there. When we have our staffing meetings, we look at every school.
No, I understand you look at every school, but what I'm saying is, is that if our cost per student, let's, let's take round numbers, let's for simplified discussion, say it's $13,000 a student. All 2,300 students coming in are not going to cost $13,000 each.
And you're right. And when we build a budget, we don't build a budget to say each student is going to cost $13,000. When we build a budget, we build a budget based on the staffing ratios and based on the membership from scratch for every school, every year. So for example, if for simple purposes, let's say a school had 1,000 students, and we're projecting 1,010 for next year, and we run those numbers through the staffing formulas, and it doesn't generate any more teachers because they can absorb the 10, there is no cost of growth. The way we calculate the cost of growth is we look at how much did it cost last year based on those numbers, and what are our new calculations, and then the difference is the cost of growth. So if we can absorb the 10 students, the cost of growth is zero. But if those 10 students generates an additional teacher, the cost of growth is the value of the teacher's salaries and benefits.
Well, and this is where the needs-based staffing, you know, discussion is going to have to be had because if we have schools that have, you know, 15 or 17 students in a classroom, and we have schools that have 33 and 34, we have such a gross parity issue that the question is, are we now causing a shift in staffing and the cost of these additional students in certain schools to trigger the need for more staffing that we might not need if we rectify some of the needs-based staffing? So we'll see where things fall out. But I would encourage us to be a little bit more detailed. At this point of the year, when we're so close, we should have some, or should be getting to the point of some very significantly close estimations of where those 2,300 students are going to appear on a density map. We should say, where are we expecting these students? And start to understand how we're attributing new students to actual costs at this point in a budget review.
And you're absolutely right, except I think the timing is a little off of when we do that because we will do that in the fall. But this was just to give you a quick look into 2015 without having to recalculate all the staffing at this point in time for the 2015 budget.
And as Mr. Plattenberg...
And as Mr. Plattenberg builds the new projection methodologies, you know, and I appreciate the fact that they're undertaking a very difficult task with this and a software provider. At this point in the year, I would suggest that we start looking at density maps of where those expectations are so that we as a board start to understand where those dollars are going to be needed. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Schultz, I was just going to recommend, you just mentioned what I was going to remind the board is, Mr. Plattenberg, this past week talked about a new system that's, that he's working on, he and his team. I'm very optimistic about that because I think it will give us, by campus, a look back and a look forward so that we have a little bit more sound and stable projections so that we can make some strategic decisions about how we allocate resources and the way in which we calculate our challenge with regard to the budget. Needs-based staffing, all the different things that we have going on in the division with this kind of challenge before us, you know, everything will have to be on the table and be looked at and examined. And we have a lot of hard work ahead, but we can get it done.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Music to my ears.
I've got several colleagues. First will be Mr. Moon, followed by Mr. Velkoff, then Ms. Heinz, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Strauss.
I think my question has been already answered. I was going to ask Ms. Quinn whether that additional growth, enrollment growth of 2,900 students for the cost of $25 million, that's FY '15.
Correct.
Not FY '14.
Correct.
So it is quite difficult to really, exactly estimate, guess what the number will be 14 months from now. It's September 2000.
Correct. This is a number that was, I guess, projected in the last CIP for '15. And at this point, that's the best number we have to give you a preliminary look into what 2015 is going to look like. And that's what this number represents.
I just want to, you know, make sure the public understand that we are talking about '15, not '14. Thank you.
Mr. Velkoff.
I want to talk about the, very briefly, about the 10 or 11 million we're considering to spend out of the carryover. Before I get to that, I would just like to ask anyone, Dr. Garza from the leadership team, to confirm my understanding of how we get to classes of 33 and 34. It's my understanding that that happens not because of systemic decisions that the board makes, but rather that those particular examples happen at schools because principals have been empowered to make decisions about their staffing. So can I just ask if somebody can confirm my understanding of that?
Mr. Velkoff, your understanding is correct. Our principals have a lot of discretion with regard to the budget. They can trade in positions and have that money allocated for other, other things. And there's some benefit to having some autonomy like that. You know, they can also determine with their master schedule how they balance classes. They might determine that another class needs to be smaller because of a need that a group of students have, another one larger. So it's very, very hard to determine from a systemic perspective why that happens, but our principals do have a lot of discretion. It is something I think that we need to look at moving forward, though. I think we're starting to hear more and more concern about that, that we're going to have to address. But with a budget that's about 88% personnel, right, Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
About 88% personnel, you can't affect an appreciable change in a budget without, unfortunately, you know, touching that, that area. There's just not enough other places to look.
Thank you for that confirmation. So I wanted to talk about the 10 or 11 million dollars we're considering spending. And I guess where I'm going to go with this is I'm going to, I'm going to offer my hope that over the next year or two, or however long it takes, because we have a lot on our plate. But I'm not really comfortable making a decision here about how to spend that money. Because I see the 195 million, I think, well, we can't spend a penny. How do I know if I, if I spend that money now that I'm going to regret it? You know, I might regret that in, in May. And I think what I'm missing is the items that are proposed as things that we could spend money on. I think I'm missing the prioritization that would have gone on prior to today. So that when we see that list over the past year, we've kind of had an idea of what's coming down the road. And we said, you know, if we have some money left over this year, these are the things we're probably going to see. And I, I think the difficulty I'm having is that, with the exception of the maintenance issues, we really haven't seen some of these things. And so then I feel like I don't know how to evaluate those compared to the other. So to some extent, we've, we've kind of gotten that with the maintenance issues. But I, I think there's maybe some room for us to reconsider how we're prioritizing the one-time expenses.
Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. I didn't know we were going to talk quite so much about class size, but I thought since we are. And I hesitate to, you know, throw another big number out there, but I, you know, I can tell you there's a lot of support among my constituents anyway, in Hunter Mill, for doing something about class size. And ultimately, the formula that we use is our policy decision, you know? Because twice over the last five years, that formula has been changed to allow larger classes. Basically, we've, we've raised it a half a child and then another half a child. And I, I think fundamentally, when I hear from folks in Hunter Mill about 33, 34 kids in a class, I do think it gets back to that. You know, if the formula were better, you know, were lower, we could get back to maybe where we were five years ago. But that's an expensive item. And we don't even have it in here, do we?
No. And it is an expensive item. And I think one of the reasons we added some positions into the staffing reserve is to address some of those hotspots. Because we know we have a lot of schools where the class sizes are smaller and more reasonable. But in order to address some of the pockets throughout the county that have the large class sizes, we did add some additional positions in the staffing reserve so that we can help those schools that have the 30-some students in a class.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. A couple of issues. Mr. Moon raised the first issue I had. I appreciate that about the projections for 2015 with the class, this number of students. I do want to piggyback on what Ms. Heinz says. What is the cost to change the class size ratio by one student?
I believe it's little over $22 million.
And, and that's one of the reasons is, as Ms. Quinn said, that the board wanted to use the staffing reserve because we didn't have the funding. Obviously, this meeting has gone on too long. We didn't have the funding to change class size. And I, and I think that is an area that the board needs to talk about. When we start hearing, previously, when this board did this a number of years ago, our trigger was classes over 30. And if this is continuing to be an issue out in the community, I, I think we have to have that renewed focus about classes over 30. Because we obviously don't have another $20 million to throw to class size. And I think that is something we need to be aware of with the superintendent to ensure when the cluster assistant superintendents are working with their schools, they're aware of that type of threshold. Because we know kids don't come in those nice little packages in the elementary school. The other issue that Mr. Velkoff raised that I think I see a little bit differently is some of those items that, that is projected for us to, to spend things on. You know, it's that fine balance of adding money now so that you can flexibly meet some of your needs and then just adding nice to haves. So when I look at these 11 million dollars, you know, some of these were direct discussions that the board had about adding more lawyers, the recognition, we, we were made aware that there were going to be problems with the music programs to, to provide some more funding there. So to me, when I look at these lists of suggestions, I, I think it's a balanced approach to not so much wants as things that need to be done. But I do think that's a good discussion for the board to continue to have. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I have Ms. Reed, and then I have three follow-ups. And before I call on anyone for the follow-ups, I would just, you know, remind my colleagues that the hour is getting late and that we do have a work session on Monday. So I will call on you, but then you can decide whether or not you need to go back tonight or it can wait till Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn, for the presentation. I appreciate it very much. It's very thorough. I have a few questions, just clarifying questions, because I do know we'll be discussing this in detail at our work session. The first one is, as, as you look at the 10 charts, the different fund statements, you have a column that says estimate and one that says actual, and then variance. And I wondered, we've talked about this before, is it possible to add a column that says approved amount? And also then, can you explain what estimate really means?
Estimate, you know, earlier as I was starting out this presentation, I talked about there various times the budget gets revised. Revised estimate, it's the same, except when we change it the first time, like now, the new fiscal year, which you adopted in May, we call it revised. So the approved budget becomes revised at year-end with these adjustments into '14. And when you modify the budget at mid-year in December and at third quarter in March, those become estimates. So when you see an estimate, that is the last time you approve the budget for that particular fiscal year. So that's the third quarter estimate. So what you'll see at mid-year is the revised number, which becomes the 2014 revised, that's the fifth column on the fund statement, that becomes the first column. And if we have any additional adjustments for 2014, that becomes the 2014 estimate. And that estimate stays, with that language, at the third quarter stage as well and at year-end. Because third quarter was the last time you changed the budget for that current fiscal year.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation. But is it possible then to add another column just so we can see what we had approved initially and kind of where we are at the end of the day for each year? That would, that would be helpful, and I don't think it would be a lot of work. My other question of clarification is regarding the Adult and Community Education Fund. First, I wanted to make sure that I understood what was in, in this package. And that was that in the years past, when we had overspent ourselves, this, this year, it sounds like we've got quite a surplus, $841,000, right? So, okay, good. That was my understanding. And I wanted to acknowledge that staff have worked very hard to focus that office and to make sure that the efforts were...
Yeah. And if you recall, this was the first full fiscal year of that reorganization and restructuring of the programs offered through ACE.
Yeah. And so that, that's terrific. But now that we have that surplus, my question is, do we need to keep it there? I mean, we've got that, and I, I see in the next fiscal year, we're kind of carrying it forward. So as a board, is it a possibility that we could take some of that and push it back into operating fund?
And most of that was generated from tuition for some of those classes. But if you recall, in a lot of these funds, when they don't have support from the general fund, which the ACE only receives support through the matched contribution for the state revenue from the general fund, they have to absorb health benefit increases, salary increases. So a lot of the ending balance is used to provide level tuition in the following years and to absorb the additional costs associated with delivering those classes. But at the end of the day, if that ending balance does build up to 5 million, I think, yes, what you're suggesting is something that we can consider.
Well, I, I...
Because they could do the matching within the ACE fund rather than through the general fund.
Right. And I see going forward, not only do we have that surplus, but we also still are including the $400,000 transfer. So again, I just wanted to understand that whether or not these were funds that we could choose to reallocate if we so desired.
But it could also be that we could reduce the tuition charge to our residents because to deliver, to deliver that particular program didn't cost as much. So...
Right. I understand what you're saying, but I think as a board, we can have that discussion because that's 1.2 million dollars that we might choose to spend elsewhere and keep the tuition where, where it is, particularly because the supply seems to be meeting the demand right now. And they're, again, very effective at, at doing what they're doing. But again, we can talk about that another day. But I wanted to clarify my understanding of perhaps some money that we can at least have a discussion about how to spend or move forward to another fiscal year. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, and then if you still want to speak, I have Ms. Schultz and Ms. Strauss for go-bags.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick things for tonight. The, some of these recurring expenses, we've been told in the past that some of these things would actually result in savings. And is any of that factored in? And all preventative maintenance? We're told that ultimately preventative maintenance will result in...
Yes. Keyword, ultimately.
Ultimately, all right.
I think because we are just starting out building our preventive maintenance, we still have a significant backlog of major maintenance, and we're still reacting, not doing more reactive maintenance than we are preventive. Because we are only in the second year of the 10-year plan to build up our preventive maintenance program.
Okay.
So I think, you're, you're correct. I think ultimately, it will save us money.
But none of that's factored into our consideration of this?
No, because it will not have an impact in any of the fiscal years near term.
And on the, the staff attorneys, is there a sense that this ultimately would save us money? Do we, do we know whether it will? Is that our hope?
Possibly.
Possibly.
So, but the way we are currently requesting funding is no reduction in the outside legal fees. But I think we need to monitor that this fiscal year and then the years going forward to see if there is an, an opportunity to reduce those outside legal fees.
Okay. And then the, the other question I had, similarly to what Mrs. Strauss mentioned, with the bus replacement using leases, and we talked about this, this earlier today. But I, I would, could, would it be possible to see how much we pay for a bus bought through lease purchase versus bought outright? I mean, over the course of the life? Because I would like to see the...
Sure, sure.
I would like to see the balance. I know, I know why we're doing this, this way. We can get more earlier, but I guess my...
We do have pretty favorable lease term. Yeah.
Well, but, you know, ultimately...
But yes, we can, ultimately, it does cost additional because we are paying the financing costs associated with leasing the buses. But we, the rates are significantly lower than what you would see in, out in the market.
But I would be interested in seeing what, you know, what our, our, our total cost over, over time is. Appreciate that. And then lastly, just to, to emphasize, the, the elementary school science readers, these are all print-only.
They're all printed.
Thank you.
Go-bags? Anyone? Ms. Schultz?
With regard to Chairman Moon's comment about 14 months from now, if we can't start projecting 14 months from now where students are coming, we're, we're in big trouble. So that's exactly the point of the new demographics. We can't, we have to know more than a year out. And we've got to know with increasing clarity because otherwise, we can't address things like capital needs, buses, bus leases, staffing, books, you know, and everything else. So we better be, get really good at figuring out what it is 14 months from now and, and even much, much further. So I, I hope those numbers of accuracy are included in our new vendor contract with, with improving our demographic projections. And then with respect to what Ms. Smith said about class sizes, we don't need an initiative division-wide about reducing our class sizes. We need it where we have a problem. So it doesn't, so, but it doesn't, it's not, it's not a question of $20 million or whatever. We, we need to look at specifically where we have the problem individually and address it individually. Well, I, I appreciate it, but let's, let's not, you know, take this and say, well, this is an incomprehensible task that, you know, we can't do unless we have a vast sum of money. Let's look at, in terms of return on investment, where we have the most serious problems, address them, you know, individually. And I hope Dr. Garza and her LT staff will take that into consideration because we do have some significant areas that need improvement. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn, for updating us and addressing our brief questions.
Thank you.
Let me continue with the new business agenda, reminding the public that there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but the action is scheduled at a future meeting. And we go on with 6.02, to accept the Virginia Department of Education designation of Fairfax County Public Schools as the Governor's Regional School for Science and Technology in Northern Virginia for 2013, 2014. 6.03, approve the changes for the 2013, 2014 for the following school board's citizen advisory committees: Adult and Community Education, Advanced Academic Programs, Career and Technical Education, Facilities Planning Advisory Council, Family and Early Childhood Education Program Head Start, Human Relations, Minority Student Achievement Oversight, School Health, Students with Disabilities, and Title I District Advisory Councils, as detailed in the agenda item. 6.04, appoint a voting delegate and an alternate delegate to the Virginia School Boards Association for the 2013 Annual Conference. And 6.05, confirm committee liaisons and assignments, as detailed in the agenda item. Moving on, another welcome to our new superintendent, and Dr. Garza, we welcome you, and this will be your first superintendent matters.
Thank you very much. Well, again, I want to apologize to the group for messing up on the names. I knew I would. I told several of you, I said, that was the thing I was most anxious about, is saying all your names so quickly, and Chairman Moon does it so well. So, anyway, I'll...
[inaudible].
Oh, okay. Well, I will certainly work on that, and that won't happen again. As I've stated before, I'm very thankful for this opportunity. I so look forward to working with you all. I'm very mindful of the significant responsibility that we have and responsibility for the 184,000 students that we're expecting when school starts. I will tell you, I've been so impressed with the leadership team, all these folks sitting right over here. They're a great group of people, and there's a lot of great things ahead. Will, I'm so impressed with you and look forward to working with you. It's, and your thoughts, your perspectives are very refreshing, so we're glad you're here. And he has a lot of homework tonight still, so he's got another night ahead of him tonight. And I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate Marshall High School. Marshall High School just received notice of being selected or being approved as a Governor's STEM Academy. And along with that, they'll be able to offer, of course, we know STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. And with that, they'll be able to offer many new rigorous, exciting educational opportunities for the students that they serve. And so we look forward to seeing them get to work with that. That'll be fun and exciting. So, thank you very much. Congratulations to Chairman Moon and to Vice Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garza, and thank you, Mr. Darnakofax. The next auto-businesses report, we will be reporting all from various work sessions. June 26, Mr. Darnakofax, you had public engagement.
Yes, Mr. Moon, and we'll be presenting a more comprehensive report of our final public engagement committee of the year at the, at the work session in the next week or so. And, but at that meeting on June 26, we wrapped up our yearly activities, and we'll be presenting to you our final recommendations for the educational summit, as well as suggestions. And we've amassed information on what various school members have done for public engagement, so we'll be giving you all that at the July work session.
Thank you, Mr. Darnakofax. Let me call Ms. Heinz for instruction from June 27.
Thank you. At our June 27 work session, the board received the report from George Mason University Researchers on Advanced Academic Program questions that the school board had posed. I want to, we all want to thank the George Mason University Researchers. George Mason is an important and valuable partner of ours here in Fairfax County, and we really appreciate all the work they did. Also want to thank Dr. Sloan Presidio and Carol Horn and your staff. I know it was a tremendous amount of work in a short order. It's a voluminous report, and we are, I think, all still digesting it, and there'll be more conversation to come.
Okay, thank you. July 8 and July 9 from Mr. Storck.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. We, on our July meeting, the governance meeting, we discussed the retreat, the upcoming retreat, in a couple of weeks, just to make sure we had essentially the right preparation. And Dr. Gomitro has some information that's being posted, you all should take a look at. But mostly, we just confirmed the agenda and the discussion that you all had with him several weeks ago. So I think we're, preparations are, I think, are ready, and we'll look forward to people coming. We'll be starting, I believe, at 2 o'clock on that Friday. And then on Saturday, we start at 9 o'clock, and it'll be going to 5 o'clock. So it's 2 to 6 and 9 to 5. We also talked about the policy for TJ and spent a fair amount of time on that, and we have recommendations on that that we'll be providing you, and you'll be able to find that as well. We'll be discussing that at our work session on Monday. And we went through a number of other policies, which I won't really report on each one individually, but we have a number of them that we'll be considering further and will ultimately be referring to the board for further consideration as well. That was July 8. On July 9, we, it was, we, Ms. Schultz and I were the meeting managers, and I handled the instructional services part, where we discussed at length the, some additional information that the instructional services staff presented to us on three different areas, and also once again talked about Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Industry. I know it's shocking to everybody, but it has been on our agendas and discussion points quite a bit, so. And Ms. Schultz, I think you had the other part, and I'll defer to you on the other side of that.
And I had the facilities section of our work session, which got broken out, and the balance of it will occur on Monday. But we talked in great length about our projections and how we're doing and what our thoughts are for the CIP and for our construction needs going forward. And so it was very productive. Actually, if anybody was ever going to look up a work session, I would say that Monday's work session on facilities, if that interests you, that's definitely one that we want to talk about. And then we did cover, to some degree, buses, that I know a number of the board members are interested in in terms of the initiative that we have going on with the blueprint for change.
Okay, thank you. Now we have a board matter, starting from Mr. Darnakofax.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. Again, I just want to thank my colleagues for bestowing this honor as vice chair upon me. I do appreciate it very much, and I am definitely looking forward to the challenges that it brings. And over the next two weeks, I just wanted to say that I'm doing a mini blitz in my area. I wasn't able to visit all my schools, but I almost did this past school year, but I'll be visiting eight over the next two weeks that I have not yet visited. Yes, we're doing a little mini summer blitz. So I look forward to seeing all of those principals. I won't be able to see many students, but I look forward to seeing the administrators in the eight schools that I've scheduled over the next two weeks. Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I'll just say congratulations to the chair and vice chair, and welcome Dr. Garza. And I, too, will be going around Providence District this summer with a little bit of a luxury of time, meeting with principals and talking a little bit about what's coming up here. Right before we know it, it'll be time to start school once again. Thank you.
Ms. Mike Rabin?
This coming Wednesday, I'll be representing the board down in Charlottesville at the legislative, the VSBA Legislative Positions Committee meeting. As you know, we submitted seven to eight amendments to current VSBA positions, and I will be advocating for those, unfortunately. As is often the case, I will be the only representative from Northern Virginia, so we might be in trouble with advocating for some of those things. But I will fill you in next week.
Thank you, Mr. Mike Rabin. Ms. Smacklacklin?
I just want to, first of all, say that on Monday, for my colleagues, we'll be getting that presentation on the countywide turf task force. And myself and supervisor Mike Frye served on that countywide turf task force. It was probably at least a 10-month investment of time, so I'm looking forward to the presentation. We're going to, we're actually the first board out of four boards that are going to get that presentation. It'll also go to the Board of Supervisors, the Park Authority Board, and the Athletic Council. But I hope that everyone will get a chance to really appreciate the incredible amount of collaboration and time that went into that report. It's pretty dense, so I urge you over the weekend to try and look at it as best you can. And I also want to tip my hat to Mr. Plattenberg, who's not here, and to Kevin Snead, because as the district board member who has two schools receiving four turf fields this summer, and there's a total of five schools, I believe, receiving nine fields, it's a substantial project, and Mother Nature's reign is just not helping us as we race toward football season, which is also going to be around the corner before we know it. But I wanted to express my appreciation to them and their department, because it's going to make a difference for not just our athletes, but for our student bands and our physical education offerings in all of those schools. And I do appreciate what it's called upon for them.
Mr. Storck?
Pass.
Besides.
Yeah, thank you. First, to Dr. Garza, pretty much every time I go around this table trying to say names, I mess it up, so don't feel bad. There's something about the pressure. I don't know what... Yeah, we all do it. Don't worry. I just, briefly, I have some community office hours coming up. Tomorrow at 9 o'clock, I will be at the Giant Supermarket at North Point Village Center in Reston with my little table and hoping to, you know, greet anybody who's coming to shop. So please, you know, if you're watching, come join me there. On Saturday at 10:00 a.m., I'll be at the Reston Regional Library for office hours. And then Saturday, July 27, at 10:00 a.m., at the Patrick Henry Library. I want to thank the principals at Hunter Mill for taking the time to meet with me this summer. I really do appreciate your patience and everything that I'm learning from you this summer. I was, last week, let's see, it was June 26, I represented us at the Governor's Task Force for Local Mandate Review, and it was a good meeting. We talked about teacher licensing and some of the mandates coming from Richmond on that. I think it's been a useful committee, task force, but, you know, the bottom line is, no task force is really going to be enough to help us with the challenges that we have in feeling like we are heard in Richmond when it comes to what we need here as a local school system. So I want to thank Michael Malloy, who's not here tonight, for meeting with me. I am setting up meetings with my state delegates and state senators for this summer. I think while everybody has a little bit of time, I would like to talk to them to make sure that they know our priorities and concerns. I think we can't assume that they know what we're up against. They handle a lot of information when they get down to Richmond. And so I want to thank Michael Malloy for giving me some good background information and getting me ready for those meetings.
Ms. Strauss?
Congratulations again, Mr. Moon, Mr. Darnakofax. I am very pleased with our leadership selection, and I think we will be well-served, and I look forward to another very successful year of charging through a lot of difficult issues. But I think our leadership team will help us get there, so congratulations.
And thank you. Ms. Evans?
I'll also add my congratulations to Mr. Moon and Ms. Darnakofax. Thank you for being willing to serve, as well as to our new cluster assistant superintendent, Douglas Tyson. We're very pleased to have him on the leadership team as well. And lastly, hearty congratulations or hearty welcome onto Mr. Ash and to Dr. Garza. We're very pleased to have you here.
Ms. Schultz?
I feel like we need to have a reception line for the farewells and the welcomes tonight. So my welcomes at the table were made earlier, but I do want to, particularly for my Robinson community, who was long beleaguered in searching for a principal welcome, principal E-line, and I know that you're probably already ramping up because you were very much long awaited, and that the Robinson community hopefully throws open and welcomes you with open arms as preparations are probably already underway for the start of a new year. Robinson being the largest school in the division and probably one of the largest schools in the country, this is a flagship school for us, and you have a big job and big shoes to fill, but we are very much excited for you to get started.
Ms. Winkle? Ms. Smith?
I just want to thank Ms. Heinz for her work as vice chairman this past year. I know it takes extra time to do that, and I think you did an outstanding job supporting Mr. Moon and supporting the board, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, we'll do debrief. Ms. Storck?
By my estimation, we had five components to this meeting. We had the closed session, we had the kind of the election, we had the recognitions, we had the action items, and then we had the new business items. So I don't really have anybody who, I don't feel we have to go around and have everybody give one or two items, but I would like to see if anybody has any comments on either of these areas. Let's start maybe with closed session. Did anybody have any particular notes? Again, closed session, you're commenting only on the process, not the content, just the process. So I'll start with Sandy, then Elizabeth.